Well, good seeing you, brother. Hey, take care of yourself. I might see you at a football game one time.
Welcome to the regular meeting at the Cape Coral City Council. Today is September 21st, 2022. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance by Councilmember Welsh.
We come here tonight to celebrate the beauty of the city, the beauty of the weather that we have, and the beauty of the people who live here. We celebrate the fact that we have a government that listens to its people, in which we have a voice, in which we can speak and make suggestions. We celebrate tonight a government in which we can elect our officials and our heard.
I pledge allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Councilmembers Cosdine.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Nelson.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Tate.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Item five is changes to the agenda. The only thing that I would request that we consider is to move item 90, which is the Youth Council Quarterly Report, to move that directly after citizens' input, and also Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon. Staff respectfully request that we withdraw public hearing item number five due to a public notice error.
Motion to approve the agenda with the changes recommended.
Second.
Any council discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosdine.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay. Item six is recognitions and achievements. We do not have any listed tonight. Item seven is approval of the minutes. We have the minutes from our August 31st, 2022 regular meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. Second.
Any council discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We also have the minutes from a regular meeting of September 7th, 2022. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Also, we have the minutes from the meeting of our September 8th, 2022 special meeting.
Motion to approve? Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Also, we have the minutes from the meeting of our September 8th, 2022 special meeting.
Motion to approve? Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Also, we have the minutes from the meeting of our September 8th, 2022 special meeting.
Motion to approve? Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is citizens' input time. It's a maximum of 60 minutes is set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual, and please remember to state your name. Anyone who wishes to participate, citizens' input will use the podium to my left in front of the double doors.
My name is Kevin McGrail. I live at 126 Southeast First Avenue in Cape Coral, District 5. I'm here to personally ask council, on behalf of the voters of Cape Coral, to vote tonight to bring back the Cape Coral City Council Televise Candidates Forum. It has been a beneficial, decades-long standing tradition in our city. In fact, I think of it as one of the uniquely good things about living in Cape Coral. I'm going to read a brief excerpt from Val Herring's Breeze editorial of August 26th. "It is unfortunate that City Manager Rob Hernandez has decided that the city should no longer provide the venue for a Cape Coral City Council Candidates Forum, a longstanding tradition that included live broadcast on the city's channel, Cape TV. It's also unfortunate that no, not up-for-re-election Cape Coral council member stepped up to strongly question this unilateral staff decision, as did former Mayor Joe Coviello two years ago. As one of the media outlets that usually took part in preparing the candidates' questions, we will miss the additional opportunity to provide good, off-the-cuff information to Cape voters directly from the candidates." I followed that up with a letter to the editor on September 2nd urging council to action on this subject. I'm here tonight to personally ask council to expedite this issue and vote to bring back the Cape TV city-sponsored Candidates Forum. If there is a will on council to get it done tonight, the city manager and staff can get it done for this November 8th election. That coverage on Cape TV and the city's website was a tremendous help to me and most of my neighbors in formulating our votes. We all can agree, local issues affect the citizens the most in their daily lives. It is hard to impossible for many working citizens to attend the live club debates and forums. By having the city's forum, it levels the playing field for all the candidates to get their views across in a neutral setting regardless of how big their campaign war chest is. It benefits our citizens since they can watch it whenever at their convenience. Chuck Bolero's Breeze article of September 9th shows that all the candidates strongly support.
Wrap it up, sir.
I sure will. Thank you much. Strongly support voter education and outreach. Council should too. Let's bring back this uniquely Cape Coral tradition. There's still time to get it done if council asks to direct the city manager and staff to do it tonight. Thank you very much for hearing me out.
Thank you.
Lou Navara, your favorite advocate and defeated candidate for District 5. I want to say some nice things and put a smile on the mayor and council's faces. I think he's going to wear out the gavel on me. The nice things 3-1-1, it seems to be working after, you know, a couple of years of complaints about it. I want to personally say Ann, Deanna, and Terry do a great job, and I want to say you've got Melissa Mickey from the school district, and of course, we always have Kimberly Brunns. That's always. I want you to give all the rank-and-file people a 15% raise. You give them plaques and everything, but that's not the best thing to do. You know, put the money in their pockets. School Board gave me two Meritas pens. I think they were made in China. I didn't like that. Thirty and 35 years of service. I want to switch over now to the electric bill, and Ms. Brunns said, you know, you sure you want them to see the check? You guys can pay it if you want. Now, I have a new proposal, Mayor, council. See, there's the check. Anybody want to pay it for me? That's fine if there's my personal information, but let's give the citizens a temporary 1,100 kilowatt, like we did with the 5,500 kilowatt, but break. I forgot what you call it. Alshammers. But you know what I'm talking about? Forget the 7%. You're not going to do that. I'm a man that likes to compromise. I think you should do that, especially if you guys want to be and gals want to be voted, Finally, I just want to say I think my council member that defeated me is still moving forward. I want to say something nice. And the last thing, oh, you can see my bill, how much I'm paying with me and Jasper. And the thermostat's at 78 degrees, which is about 25 degrees Celsius. Okay. Lastly, we got a picture. I think you're ready. Briowski. It's for aceta. That means acid in Italian. I know the mayor and I need it, and I bought it for us and maybe some of the council. I want to share it. Everybody gives me acid, and I guess I give them acid, especially code enforcement now, but we won't talk about that. We're being positive. The police have been nice lately.
Thank you, Mr. Navara.
Thank you. Oh, by the way, I saw Chief Newland last night, but he didn't have anything to say about anybody. Thank you.
Thanks.
I see him at the school board. He's happy. He looks good.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, just, we'll give that to the council, you know, the Constitution, First Amendment. I gave you one, but can we...
All right, let's move on to the next person, please.
Uh-oh. All right, don't bang together.
It's always fun to follow. Hi, I'm Tom Shadrack, independent citizen of Cape Coral. I am on the Budget Committee, but I'm here speaking on my behalf tonight. I've got a chart I wanted to show with a proposal, a recommendation. After we learned last week at the hearing that we have a $4 million surplus into our electric tax from the public service tax, I just wanted to show a few statistics upfront that the ad valorem tax is increasing $7 million to our budget. That's the property tax, even though we've done the rollback rate, which is great. It's still a surplus, you know, an additional $7 million over last year in the budget. But I do want to highlight there, the budget that's out there for the public service tax and the franchise fees, both impacted due to the increase in our electric cost. I'm sure you've heard from all the residents, or a lot of them, of that increased cost, and then the windfall the city is receiving that was discussed, $4 million just on public service tax. But we didn't discuss that the franchise fee is also 3%, which in my estimate, that's my number up there, 1.5 million. That's just a guess. So it looks like we're, the city is receiving a $5.5 million windfall that wasn't in the original budget over a week ago. So I'm recommending that we do a six-month deletion of the public service tax and franchise fees on the LCEC billings from April of next year through September. My guess is that's roughly the 10% savings to the residents, and that $5.5 million will be put back in their pockets. Now, the reason, I know when we increased the tax for the charter school on the electric, it took six months to get through all the bureaucracy and get LCAC to change the billing. So that's six months from now, April. So you really have to act now if you want to return that money back to our citizens. But that's my recommendation, and I appreciate your consideration. Any questions for me? I think everybody got a copy of this, so, okay.
Thank you.
All right, God bless everyone. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Richards, and I live at 21st Terrace here in southeast Cape Coral, resident of 10 years and an Army veteran. I want to personally thank Mr. Shepherd for meeting with me the other night and explaining how the city works with its repaving. I can tell everybody in this room that my street is abysmal, okay? And he showed up at my house and talked to me for about an hour or so and explained to me the workings and how these things are addressed. And I just want to extend, sir, a personal point of gratitude for your taking the time out of your schedule to do that, and that's really all I've got to say. Thank you, sir. And the residents of 21st Terrace also, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. You remember me, Paul Beatty from the Lee BIA and President Beatty Development. I'm back before you today to continue the stress of this crisis we are in with our permitting. I was here a couple of months ago. We have seen zero improvement, absolutely zero. The closing on Fridays has done nothing. We have not, we're not getting our permits. I just got an email from one of our CSRs. They're still over a month behind in reading emails and processing. We've been talking to a few of our friends, three of the largest residential and commercial builders in the city. D.R. Orton's here tonight, Christopher Allen, Brooks &amp; Freud. Mr. Mayor, I know you've been talking to Richard Freud yourself. Synergy &amp; Lennar, all of us collectively represent over a half of billion dollars in impact permit fees, assessments, sales volume, and taxes. Richard alone has a billion dollars' worth of construction that is being impacted by this horrible system. We're hearing that the system upgrade that's going to go live in a couple of weeks is going to fix everything. We're hearing the testers, it's not going to fix a thing. It's just as bad. I can personally tell you, since I've been here, my office staff has lost tens of hours of time waiting on the system. We're not here to tell you what plan should be, but we're here to urge council and Mr. Mayor to ask staff to bring one back before the upgrade is launched. Our businesses cannot continue to wait while the city attempts to make the system work. It is frankly costing us too much money and issues with our clients. We're all hoping we're wrong, but frankly, we have lost complete faith in the city leadership to navigate us out of this crisis. If the city had a Plan B back in February, we would not be sitting here tonight. We ask, in addition to developing a Plan B, that the city provides free permits to the construction industry starting October 1st for at least six months or until we have a functional system that we can operate. As the owner of a customer-based business, we must bend over backwards when problems arise and go the extra mile to make our clients happy. We believe the city should do the same. This would be a positive message to the construction industry that the city understands our pain is committing to supporting growth. I'm sure there's enough money in the Permit Reserve Fund to support this effort. The city brings in, we also ask, as you all know, we lost our building official. No communication to the building industry. We ask, we've been working with Brent Brewster across the river who knows EnerGov, and he has offered his services to help come over and help us. We need to bring in a building official in the interim to help with this crisis. You need someone local, not someone from the East Coast. Before I finish, I want to thank Customer Service and Building Division. I know many are new, but they all have worked hard. I'd also like to let council know, since February, they've lost 25% of their staff. Let that sink in. This system has caused 25% of your staff to leave the city. We need a fix. We need it now.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Mike Stone. Later on, you might see me on the, I'm applying for the Budget Review Committee, but first I'd like to just speak on part of a little bit what Paul said with a few details. There's a state statute that says that the individual government bodies have up to 30 days to issue a residential building permit. We put in a permit on 6/28. It was looked at for the very first time 60 days later. So you have 30 days to issue it. It wasn't looked at for 60 days. Now, the final due date on that permit will make it run out four months. I was at a city council meeting, two meetings ago, and we discovered that the pay for the incoming people to process permits, that first step in the line of defense was, I think, $16.60 an hour. At that point, Dan said, or sorry, Mr. Shepherd said, "We're never going to have a chance to fill these positions," or something like that, I paraphrase. I just want to point out that you could pay that person almost anything and not have the impact that we're having. I have a 400, this permit that I'm looking at is a $400,000 house. That might not be a giant house, but with inflation being at about a percent a month, by the time my permit's issued, this house costs $16,000 more than when I offered it to the customer. I only have a couple options there. Either I eat it and go out of business, stop paying taxes, maybe have to move, or the customer eats it. They already have a loan in place. They don't have the extra money. We find ourselves at the end of the cycle saying, hey, prices went up. And they say, I know, but it was four months before you ever put any dollars in the ground. So I think giving away a free permit might help, but I'd rather have it be done. And so, sorry, I don't mean to, I don't mean to take away the thunder. And one of the ideas would be, why don't we have some of these easy permits? I remember in Charlie, they said, you don't even need a roof permit anymore. You could just put a roof on because there's so many of them. This is a fence permit we've been waiting on through a fence company. It was applied for on the 4th of August. It was rejected because it was missing one item, one gate code schematic latch. The fence company returned that in one day. It was rejected on the 8th after 34 days of waiting to be looked at, rejected, and still has not been looked at. We're waiting to complete the house. They're in a moving truck. They're living in a hotel. So when we talk about hiring in people at $16 and you just can't find good help, maybe spend some of that $5 million surplus or the permitting fees to hire those people to put them in place. And I hope that my views tonight don't put me in a negative light when I come up for my committee interview later. I appreciate you guys. I just wanted to hear, I want you to hear some real dollars and cents that are hitting your, you know, the people that live in our city and also the business owners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Walter Ilchism, AKA Wally. I really don't want to be here tonight, and I don't like, I don't really like airing my dirty laundry out, but can everybody that's here from DCD please stand up? Everybody from the Building Department, please stand up. The Rock Bro, Back Walls, and they're here, most of them have tenure with the city, and I'm here to discuss another epic failure from the Human Resource Department in the way that things were handled. You sit down. I think they get the message. You know, these are long-tenured employees, and they paid their dues, they waited their turn, they did things, but nobody seems on the administrative side to take Local 2301 and its membership as a stakeholder in what happens to our employees. Everything's done on a knee-jerk reaction, and listen, if my three minutes run out, I ask about five or six of yous to get in behind me and defer your time to me. Madam Attorney, I think that's possible. But the reality of it is, is that decisions are made that affect this department in a very negative way with salary inversion. We've been talking to the city about it for a year, that, you know what? I think, I'll let Richie talk what he says. You can't bring new people in at a rate that's already higher than somebody's been here for three or four years or five years, and that you're bringing them in, and look at the faces. I mean, the heads are all shaking, and what are you doing? You've made, they have made a bad situation worse. You're welcome. This is utter insanity, because we keep making worse mistakes and expecting a different result. So they just make really, like I said, epic failure of decisions, and it's affecting not only your workers, but how do you think they feel now that they got to come in and somebody that's brand-new just got a rebate check for two years' worth of retro for almost $3,000, and somebody's been there three years, and they got zero? How do you work, how do you do these things? We offer solutions that were so simple, but nobody listened. It's like it falls on deaf ears. Somebody want to come in line here and defer their time to me?
Madam City Attorney?
The council is able to give a speaker more time, but speakers are not able to yield each other's time to give a speaker more time.
Thank you.
Pursuant to the council rules procedure.
Thank you.
They're all wrapping up.
So I know I've had discussion with Mr. Ilchism today already on this topic, but, and I think we kind of get the, we've got the message. So I think, I know probably Mr. Jones will be coming up again, so I think between the two of you, I'm sure you can get the message across that you're trying to make.
They're here, the whole department. We get it. But when we give a, when we give us a good solution that could have corrected this situation and helped them CSRs with a reclassification...
Mr. Jones.
Wouldn't have been this bad. Talk about even doing it.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Richard Jones, Local 2301 President. I'm going to piggyback what Mr. Ilchism was saying. At your last COW meeting, the Special Projects Coordinator, I believe his title is Mr. Granbough, gave options to you that they were looking at to take, which was to provide the 10% increase in accordance with the ordinance and a reclassification. I went and spoke with him a couple of days after that presentation because my phone didn't stop ringing, because you said we're going to take care of the new and not the old. I've been here for a year talking about, give us all the range increase that we need to be competitive in the market, and it's fallen on deaf ears so far. The ordinance says upon completing the initial probationary period, an employee hired or rehired at the minimum of his or her grade may receive an increase in pay of not more than 10%, provided that the department head requests it and the director approves it. The collective bargaining agreement says the city shall only reimburse an individual for monies owed to the employee due to his or her employment with the city for the two-year period immediately preceding the discovery of the pay error. This was not a pay error. This department chose not to provide these increases, and now they don't have the ability to say it was an error. We're going back to give them the money. So again, HR is going to have to retract what they did, financial impact to people, and then you have these folks sitting here saying, what about me? Now you fragmented that department. You've put the old people, the older timers against the new timers, and it's not going to keep them in the department. They're still going to go to the other departments and make the $2 more an hour, and now you're creating the fragmentation in the other department because they're going to go to utilities or public works and be making more than the people that are already there and have the tenure. I asked Mr. Granbough, or I expressed to Mr. Granbough that I believe this local should be considered a stakeholder in this, in this fix EnerGov situation, and he assured me he would start sending me the reports, and I appreciate that. We need a seat at the table. We're talking about using volunteers to help get through the permitting process. I'm going to tell you, just like I've warned them three or four times now, be careful what you do, because if you do not follow the collective bargaining agreement when it comes to issuing overtime, we will file a grievance and start paying people that are sitting at home because you failed to follow the contract. These people that work in that department are just as frustrated as the contractors that are, they're working for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this isn't an open discussion. Thank you. All right, anyone else that would wish to participate in citizens' input?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Ray Keak. I was here at the last council meeting, and I complained about a house that's abandoned that I'm attached to. I own one half of the duplex, and you guys looked into it. The results are totally unsatisfactory. I was told that the homeowner is being fined $100 a day and that he has another court hearing October 28th, I believe. That does not rectify the problem. Right now, the weeds are getting to be higher than my six-foot fence. The property is unsecured. It's abandoned, and as far as I can see, if the city can mow vacant lots, they can take care of this problem. You know, I brought it up that, you know, there's rats there, and the snakes come in chasing the rats. I've caught the rats and the snakes in my garage. So with that being said, I'm issuing a call out to all you members to stop by this property, look at it, and see firsthand how bad it is. You know, being an unsecured property, there's a pool in the backyard that's filled with green water. Now, we have little ones that walk through the neighborhood. Let's not have a tragedy. Get that pool drained and property secured. Let's do it. Let's do, take care of something so we don't have a tragedy and then say, "Well, we should have done something about it." So I don't know who District 3 is, but I believe that's your district, and I'm issuing a special call out to you to come see me at my house and we'll go over this property and see what we can do to rectify this problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, can I ask Ray, and Ray, I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name. Can you give me the exact address of that house?
The exact address is 1418 Southeast State Avenue.
Thank you.
And I live at 1414. You know, I'm one-half of a duplex.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input? Citizens' input is now closed. I'll open up for council discussion for citizens' input. Any council discussion? Councilmember Shepherd?
What I would like to talk about is the event that the city used to hold, the candidates' As a councilman and as a citizen here for 20-something years, I liked watching that. It was a, it was a resource to get to know the people running for office. It's very hard for people running for these council positions to reach out to 200,000 people. I mean, the only thing that you really have is signage and, you know, social media. So I think it's a great resource that we should continue. And I don't think there was ever a negative spin all these years that we've had it. I don't know why it was taken away. I think it was a positive for citizens to be able to watch and get, learn about people running for these positions. And I'm just curious why it went away and I'm looking to my other council members to see why we can't continue this. I think it was an asset. I don't recall any problems. If there was problems, maybe somebody needs to talk about, if there was a negative spin with it. The other thing I would like to talk about is that home. City Manager, please look into that. I can't imagine it being that horrible and we don't, there's nothing we can do about it. If we could send it, I know in the past we sent code people out to mow properties and things like that or even secure it. I think it's a safety issue. You know, I wouldn't want to hear that a child drowned into this pool filled with green water or somebody entering into this open home and, you know, creating a fire or something. So to me, this is pretty urgent. I think we really need to jump on that. And I'd like to thank the citizen that reached out to me for a meeting with them. Sir, it's my job as a councilman, when citizens reach out to me with problems, it's my job to help. I know I might not told you what you wanted to hear, but I educated you, I told you how the program works and gave you the information, but thank you. And to others, you know, I try to reach out to everybody, but I want you to know that all council members sitting up here, we get inundated with calls and emails and we all try to reach out to as many people as we can. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayden.
Mr. McGrath, I still owe you a phone call. And I will do that to address what Councilmember Shepherd and Mr. McGrath brought up as well. The forums that we had in this chamber for over a decade, because I was a part of it as a member of the media asking the questions. And then I was a part of it two years ago as a candidate. I founded a service to the community because it was the only venue where we could reach out to all of the city and provide a forum where they could watch on TV, watch on their computer, attend in person. It was a point of information for people to be able to listen, listen to the candidates. I think Ms. Herring was referring to me, the non-candidate this year, because I did have a discussion with the city manager about it several months ago because I thought it was an important service for us to provide. He was uncomfortable with providing this chamber for the candidates. And even though we disagreed with that, I respected his position and decided not to push it any further. I don't know that it should be the purview of this diocese since we do have candidates up here to decide whether or not they should elect themselves to be at a forum. So, you know, let alone, I don't know if it was a good decision or a bad decision not to push it, although, but I'll, you know, say tonight what I said to him. It was a service that I thought was valuable for the city. It was usually well-attended. I know the media worked hard at their questions. It was moderated professionally and, you know, I just thought it was something that benefited, benefited the residents. But I think it's the city manager's decision whether or not he wants to provide this venue. I don't think it's the council's. But, you know, my position is that we're probably a little late in the game now to do it, but I think in the future I would like to see them, see them continue. I think the residents look forward to it and I think the candidates did as well. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Tate?
Thank you. As to the candidate forums, whether or not they continue is not up to this council because we are five weeks, six weeks out from election. It's very close. Also absentee ballots go out very soon. There are four or five, you can ask the candidates up here, four debates coming up in the next two weeks. September 27th, October 3rd, 4th, 5th. So there are, there are so many different organizations having them. And I don't think that you're going to have enough time this year to get it done. And as Councilmember Hayden said, you do have candidates up here, so I don't think that it's probably the best time, maybe for next year when the new council comes in, whoever they are, they can discuss it and decide for the following year what they're going to do. But I don't know that we would have time to do it this year and to do it service because the candidates are quite busy in the next 10 days because absentee ballots go out. So everyone's trying to hold their forums before the absentee ballots go out. And they are on Facebook Live and they do replay them, so I think there's some opportunity there. But thank you, former councilmember, for coming to talk about it. To the person on the duplex, in my district, I have a couple of properties like those and I'm not sure that you're aware, but we have to follow state law. And that is the problem, is we cannot cut someone's grass unless we have noticed them properly and let them know. So we do vacant lawns because we have an ordinance in place for that. But I have a property in my district which is the same prop, same situation. And we just now are getting to the point where we, it's been three months, we just now have gotten the approval from the courts to go ahead and allow us to cut the grass. So unfortunately, there is a process. Now, maybe the city manager can help a little bit with the security of the property if it's a safety issue, but it's not quite as simple as you might think. So that's, I just wanted to let you know that. As to Mr. Beatty and the builders that are here, I've spoken to many of you and Christopher Allen Holmes especially, he and I talk on a regular basis. Billy Johnson from the Cape Coral Construction Industry is an integral part of EnerGov. And personally, I think things have gotten a little bit better. I can't say they're perfect by any means, but I will say that I think they've gotten a little bit better. And while I appreciate all the criticism and you want something for free, free isn't going to make it go any faster. So it's going to cause, you're going to have the same problems for free. So I think we have to continue to work harder and smarter and get this figured out. But I do think that we, as a council, have certainly heard it, gotten it, and my calls and my emails have slowed down tremendously. I have heard issues, I'm not going to say that I haven't, but I know that the Cape Coral Construction Industry is on top of it and they're attending weekly staff meetings and reporting to their members and they get constant communication from their members because we get copied on them. So every week, they are getting updates. So I hope you'll continue to let us work through the system. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you. Also with the permit, you had said that the Fort Myers building official did reach out and say he was willing to help. I've spoken with him as well, as well as the plans review supervisor, manager, there's people in Fort Myers that are willing to help. What my concern with that is, is our collective bargaining agreement. So I don't know if they want to reach out to Vince directly and see if they can work something out of that or if we're tied not being able to use them because of what it is. So I haven't spoken with Vince about it because I spoke with the building official last week, happened to run into him and he expressed that. But yeah, there's solutions and I know we're doing our best to try to figure it out. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll also mention, I did speak with the executive director of the BIA a day or two ago and he had mentioned that the Fort Myers building official was willing to help. I passed that information on to our city manager yesterday, I believe it was, and also to Mr. Keter when I spoke with him. But that's something that staff and our city manager will have to address since that's the, his purview as far as staffing. I know we have a mechanism in place as far as our building official after this Friday and I see that Mr. City Manager's light is on, so I'll give him the opportunity to respond not only to this, but some of the other topics that were brought up tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity. First, let me start if it's okay in the order of the speakers that went to the podium today, if that's all right.
Yes, sir.
I want to address the issue with the candidates forum because I think it's important that everyone understand my thought process for making a decision that I know ran counter to longstanding tradition here in the city. And let me just say, Mr. Mayor, that my position today is consistent with the position that I had when city council appointed me as city manager and there was a different mayor sitting in your seat. I was approached at that time and I was informed that the city typically hosted a forum and utilized city resources to essentially ensure that the forum was a success. I expressed my concerns. I thought that that was entirely inappropriate for city employees and city resources to be used for political activities. At that time, we made a compromise between myself and the mayor at the time and I said, given the short timeframe with the upcoming forum, I said, "Okay, I would agree to allow the use of this room that year for the forum. However, there would be no city employees involved whatsoever in ensuring the success of that particular event." I was told by many city employees that they were involved in reviewing questions, vetting questions, summarizing the questions, things of that nature. And again, I was highly uncomfortable with that. And so that's what led me then to decide that that is certainly something that I cannot support as the city manager in terms of allocating city resources for that purpose. City Hall and this room in general is not available for the public's use for any type of event. In fact, I receive numerous requests during the year from groups that have members that are in the room today that want to hold a private event here in City Hall and in this room. And my response is, no. Our standard practice has been that we do not make this room available for anything other than official city business for any group. So a political campaign, a forum involving various candidates for office is an event that is basically an expression of speech. And in that particular instance, it's an expression of political speech. So if I allow Group X that comes in and wants to host a candidate's forum and then the following week I get a different group, not necessarily interested in holding a forum, but they want a venue to express their opinions on an issue, how do I say yes or no to one group and yes or no and exclude the other group? So in the interest of fairness, I decided that this room would be off-limits for any kind of free speech activity, political or otherwise. And so I said that this room is not available for the public's general use for any type of event regardless if it's free speech or not. But there are other facilities that are owned and operated by the city that are available and those are rooms that we make available to members of the public for a fee. And in fact, I understand that tomorrow at a city facility, the Yacht Club, a community organization, is hosting a candidate forum. And in that particular candidate's forum, that organization paid to use the city's facility and all of the resources that come along with that. We don't have that program here in place for council chambers and I don't recommend that we open it for that purpose. So any group is welcome, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, to use the Yacht Club or any other facility, community room that we make available. Now, in terms of broadcasting, there are numerous resources available in the community that people can rent to broadcast a particular event. And so with that, knowing that there are resources available in the organization and there are other opportunities and other venues, I do not think it is a, an acceptable and reasonable use of public funds to help promote a political campaign. And in fact, there is language in state law that talks about candidates being prohibited from using the services and resources of municipalities for, during working hours, for any campaign-related purposes. And so, Mr. Mayor, that's my explanation on that particular issue as to why I made that decision, right, wrong, or indifferent, but those, that's the thought process that I use to essentially ensure that City Hall and in particular, this room, remains neutral grounds and really separated from any type of political activity.
Any comments on the, as far as the staffing issue that was brought up?
Yes, so I want to go ahead and address some of the other things. And let's go to the permitting. And I am not by any shape or form minimizing the comments that were made today by Mr. Beatty and by Mr. Stone. I get it, I feel their pain, I know their pain. However, I take a little bit of offense when members come here and say there's been absolutely zero improvement and that we're basically doing nothing. Because, Mr. Mayor, you know that each week, our staff reports to you in great detail, both at the podium and in writing, and we identify in excruciating detail. And we share that information with our friends in the industry to keep them apprised of every single step in the process associated with getting this right. And so when people come here and say, "Well, the system doesn't work, it's never going to work," well, you know what? They're not IT experts. And we have IT experts that we've hired, independent IT experts, and we've gone to communities and we've, and we have reasonable assurance that the software does in fact work. And so we said early on that this was going to be a marathon, not a sprint, that it was going to be painful and it was going to be several months in the process before we can hopefully enjoy the fruits of our labor and get back to a normal operating environment. I am still convinced that we will get there. And Mr. Granbo will give you his, this week's presentation and to again reiterate the progress that we are making. Again, I am not minimizing the delays and the inconvenience that Mr. Beatty and others are experiencing in the industry. I'm not doing that at all. But again, just clarifying that, yes, we are making progress and we will get there. And I continue to ask for their patience and the industry's patience in working with us in resolving this issue. Now, in terms of offers to help, well, that's, I really appreciate the fact that other building officials- officials have reached out to our elected officials and made these offers, but the reality is that these building officials work for city managers. And so they've got to get their approval from their city manager to extend help to the city, and I haven't heard from a building official or another city manager, for that matter. But I will say this, I think from minute one, when we announced that Mr. Popowski was leaving the city, we mentioned to you that we had a plan in place, and we were going to bring in a temporary service provider to serve as the building official until we complete the recruitment and hiring process. And that is the process that we are following. I welcome the assistance of any other official, building official that's out there or any other city, and we will definitely bring them into the fold, but we are moving forward with the contract to, for contracted building official services during the interim. With respect to the personnel issues that were discussed here, and let me just say, with all due respect to my friends, Wally and Mr. Jones over at the General Employees, I'm really disappointed that once again I have been broadsided by their concerns. Under the city council manager form of government, which this city has by charter, which is public law, the city council, and this is for the benefit of the public and the benefit of the people in the audience, it's not directed to members of city council, but under our form of government, the city council serves as a legislative body. Operational and administrative issues relating to personnel decisions, operational decisions, supervision of folks, salary compensation decisions and so forth are made within the guidelines that are approved by city council. This is not the venue for members of any collective bargaining group to come and discuss general issues or frustrations or disputes or grievances that they may have with members of management. In our various collective bargaining agreements, we have very specific avenues for redress. One, in the case of the General Employees, it calls for a Labor Management Committee where both representatives from management and labor meet to discuss issues of mutual concern. If there's a failure in that process, our collective bargaining agreements provide for a formal grievance procedure, where they can ultimately elevate a grievance to my office, and in fact, if they don't agree with me, then the procedure allows for a third party to weigh in to solve a dispute. But, Mr. Mayor, most importantly, the leadership team over at the union, they have access to me 24/7, and they've used that access. But lately, and in this particular issue, I wasn't aware of the specifics that were discussed here until late yesterday afternoon. And so I'm making these comments because I think the solution is simple. So rather than coming here and express grievances about the performance at a particular department over another before a group that really has no involvement in that issue, I would ask that my friends just pick up the phone and call me like we've done in the past, and we meet to discuss and resolve these issues as we have done in the past. So again, I just make that offer. I find it inappropriate for that type of airing of dirty laundry, airing of grievances to take place here in this venue because it is not an appropriate venue. However, everyone is entitled to three minutes at the podium. With respect to the abandoned house, Mr. Mayor, at 1418 Southeast 8th Avenue, I want to piggyback on the comments that Councilmember Tate made, and that is that everyone is entitled to due process. We don't have authority to simply show up on somebody's property and board windows, cut the grass, or do anything else that we like. We have to follow the code enforcement process. There's a special magistrate that issues findings of laws and directs certain actions to take place. And when all of that fails, then we have to go back and go through a different procedure to declare the property a nuisance so we can get the appropriate legal authority to go in and actually cut the grass, secure the pool, secure the house, and so forth. So you heard today that we're somewhere in that process, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to get an update from staff, but I will work with Ray to ensure that he is informed of that process, but we have to follow the law. And we will follow the law. And as long as we will follow the law, we will make sure that the nuisances at that particular property are taken care of. But again, these things don't happen overnight. It's a process that we may follow. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think I addressed most of the issues discussed here by members of the public that went to the podium. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on those topics.
Thank you. Councilmember Heaton.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to something that the city manager said about the forums. And again, I respect your decision and appreciate your explanation. There is one correction because it's personal to me. From 2001 to 2019, I was one of two people asking questions at those events. And I can guarantee you, at no time did city staff review, censor, or look at our questions because I guarantee you, I wouldn't have done it. You know, that wasn't the point of the forum. The point of the forum was to have an independent conversation with these candidates between the media. The only reason staff was here was to turn the lights on and operate the cameras. That was really the only extent of their role. The questions were ours. We met with another member, myself and the other paper. We met, we went over them, and I don't know what happened two years ago, but I can guarantee you, during that timeframe, during those 18 years, there were a few years that we didn't do it. In fact, one of my questions rubbed people in the audience and the candidates the wrong way, that they didn't allow us to do the forums for a few years. And that was a city decision then to not do them. And then I think, at the time, Councilmember Donnell, and then Mayor Coviallo decided to bring it back. But, you know, that's why we tried to keep that separation as much as we could between the city and who was actually doing the event. So the venue was provided, and again, what I don't want to get lost here is, you know, I do appreciate your explanation. It's a good one, it makes sense, but I wanted to correct that one part of it, that the city wasn't involved at all in how those questions were set up. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Tate.
I did have a question on the building permits. I've heard several people, not just tonight, talk about the timeline on the 30 days if they don't get their permit, that we owe them money. I'd like to get a clarification on that because I've heard it so many different times. And what's the law? What does it say? And are we doing it? Are we not doing it?
Yes, so if, Mr. Mayor, if I can ask Vincent Cataro, the Director of Development Services, to come to the podium.
He's there that quick?
Yeah.
When you ask, he jumps.
Vince Cataro, Development Services Director. The law actually states that when a single-family building permit is filed, one of three things has to happen within 30 days. It is not tied to an approval by itself. The statute reads that it has to be approved, it has to be sent back for more information, or rejected. Yes, we're falling behind. There's no doubt about that. But I have been doing spot checks with our customer service manager over the past couple of weeks and have seen some improvements, and you mentioned those, Councilmember Tate, and I've spoken to Mr. Hernandez about it. We have seen some. Yes, there's still some issues, and we're working as hard as we can. The good news is, all of the customer service representatives that you graciously granted the department have been filled. We have new people. So the plans examiners were very busy February, March, April, when all the backlog hit. They're even more busy today because we got more people pushing permits through to them. Having said that, that's what the statute says. And I just want to add one more thing, if I may. I know you didn't ask this, but I just wanted to add one more piece of information about timelines. The timelines are all different for all different types of permits, and some permits don't even have a timeline, which makes it very difficult for us. Some have a 10-day turnaround, and there's no rhyme or reason to it. And on the 10-day, it actually gives the applicant 10 days to respond. And if they don't, the clock stops ticking. It's kind of like a basketball game where the shot clock goes off after a certain period of time in the game, similar to that. So following all that is challenging, but we have numerous flow charts, and the staff's aware of them, and we're building them into EnerGov to let the reviewers know what those timelines are. There have been some challenges with that in putting in the correct dates, and that's where I've had to step in too, in some of the, maybe not reconfiguration issues, because the staff's, that is much more knowledgeable with the system than I am, do that, but I've had to step in and talk to people at a higher level like Matt and Michelle Hoffman and so forth, and let them know what those timelines are. I would say that of all the staff members, I'm the one that knows them the best, and I should, as the department director. So we're still struggling with that, and we're trying to move all the permits other than single-family that are in the 10-day cycle. We're trying to put everything in the 10-day cycle, which is why all these changes that Matt and the staff are working on now, the push button, are very important because some there's no limit on, but we want to treat it like it has a limit. We believe that's only fair to the development community, and it actually makes it easier on staff because they know what a deadline is. But the 30-day clock is different for single-family than other permits.
So just so I understand it, so for single-family, let's talk about that because that's the bulk of who was here today and who has been emailing us. So currently, I mean, I don't want you to spend a lot of time in your department worrying about whether we met the 30 days because you need to do other work. But would you say currently there are builders that should be getting that refund? I mean, do you have statistics that show that, you know, we are holding up permits and there are builders out there that rightly so have this?
Oh, yeah. We've issued a few, and people have asked for them, and some have said, we don't want, some have written back to us and say, we don't want it if you can guarantee you'll get something out to me this week. And we have a legal opinion on it, and we know what the statute says. It says they shall be entitled to it. But to go back and look at all those since, back to February 22nd, really is another conversation because it would take my staff literally hundreds of hours.
Well, that's why I said, we wouldn't want to waste time doing that when we could actually work on permits. So, all right, well, thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it.
Just one quick thing, Vince. I wanted to mention, just so the audience and council knows, the days that Vince was mentioning were business days, correct, Vince, and not calendar days? I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. They're calendar days, so it's more than 30.
Business days.
Business. It's business, so it's more than 30, like 30, 35, somewhere in there. But different types of permits have different requirements. Some say business, and some don't. So...
Depending on the permit.
Depending on the permit, yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of my points was addressed already by Councilmember Tate on the tail end of that conversation. I was going to ask if these violations are, I guess, deadlines in regards to the Florida statute timeline and the refunded permit fees did occur or are currently occurring. The other question, though, that I did have was, what, I mean, if we've got these situations where the individuals are putting in these permits and these timelines, maybe the city attorney would be able to provide that information. Do we have in that statute that's been cited, is there, is there an affirmative obligation on our behalf to issue those refunds, or is it on a per complaint basis? What sort of obligations do we have if there are those violations that are occurring?
I guess I hadn't realized he'd moved away from the point. I believe that our legal opinion was that the statute places an affirmative obligation on the city, that it does not require that an applicant for a permit request a refund. That's my recollection of it. I don't have it in front of me, and I haven't looked at it since the day we issued it, the opinion, but that's my recollection of the question that was asked and the opinion that was given.
Okay, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I believe the statement was that individuals had asked for it, and we've provided those refunds, but it sounds like what you had just said was that we should be doing that without being asked?
I think right now, if I may.
Yes, sir.
With everything that we have going on right now, Councilmember, it would be almost impossible for us to drop what we're doing to figure out and issue refunds to impacted organizations. Maybe that is something that we take on after we get EnerGov stabilized, but if we have to do it right now, the wheels will fall off the wagon.
No, I understand that, but I also understand, if I know anything, that hidden people in the pockets, and in this case, unfortunately, the city incites a certain amount of action as well. So I'm not saying that we're not doing everything that we are, but it doesn't seem fair that if that's an obligation that we have that we're not able to do because of a convenience of time. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, there is one other point that I just remembered. It's related to this issue, but I think there was a comment that was made that was along the lines that we've lost 25% of the staff. And I don't think that's correct. In fact, I've worked with Ms. Sinago, and we looked at the attrition in development services over the last, I believe, two years. And what we actually, we can confirm that there has been turnover in the customer service ranks, that customer service representative ranks. That's true. But we also found that they're not leaving the city. There was actually, there was less than five, I believe, of individuals that actually separated from the city, that were customer service representatives. What we found is they were actually getting promoted. And so they were getting promoted to other departments in the city, but the number one department that they were getting promoted to was Development Services. So I just wanted to share that tidbit of information with you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor.
You were done, right? Councilmember Long.
Yeah, I was. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, do you have plans to meet with either Mr. Ilchism or Mr. Jones regarding their concerns?
I am treating Mr. Ilchism to lunch tomorrow, in fact.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure that meeting was going to happen. And then, secondly, I also wanted to clarify, I believe the Yacht Club forum that you were talking about is actually occurring on October 3rd. It's hosted by the, unless I don't know, because I believe we have a budget meeting Thursday, this Thursday, at 5:05. So I believe it's hosted by the Cape Coral Chamber.
Thank you for that.
On October 3rd. Don't make me panic. Don't make us panic. But thank you. And then, you know, I do support your decision regarding the debate here at city council chambers for all of the reasons that you stated, and as Councilmember Tate mentioned, that's certainly something we can talk about once we have a new council up here and, you know, discuss and either agree or disagree with you moving forward. But I understand where you're coming from and your reasoning's why. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Tate.
Sorry, one final question. It may come up in Matt's report, but to answer a couple of the things that the construction industry brought up, we are starting the escalation of the roof fence-type permits, correct?
Yes.
I don't know if everybody's familiar with it, those that are here tonight, you know, that had problems.
So I tell you what, I'm going to let Mr. Grambo answer that question. Do you want him to do it now, or do you want to...
Well, they're here, so I'd rather do it now, if that's okay, just because they're here.
Yeah, I mean, I was going to, most of my comments on this topic, I was going to wait till I heard.
Okay, then I'll wait. You all just have to watch on TV. Okay.
All right. Any other discussions on citizens' input? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item nine is business, nine D is the youth council
Hello. Today, we're here to present our quarterly report. I am Vice Chair Little from Oasis High School.
I am member and cheddar from Oasis Charter High School.
My name is Renee Bella. I'm from Cape Coral High School.
I'm Olivia Revelo, and I'm a junior from North Fort Myers High School.
Just pulling up the presentation. All right, so thank you for giving us your time for the quarterly report. Firstly, the spring gala. We're continuing our annual spring gala event next year. We decided on the event March 11th, 2023, and also designed the flower you see at the right. We also decided on the theme Tales We also decided on the theme Tales Old Is Time because it appreciates the past and history of Cape Coral for its upcoming 50th anniversary. All proceeds from the gala will go to the nonprofit organization Blessings in a Backpack. And for the FLC Youth Council Community Service Contest of 2022, during our June 24th meeting, Council Leysen Hayden announced that we won the FLC 2022 Youth Council Community Service Contest with other youth councils from around the state. On August 26th, Erin Russell, Ambassador of the Florida League of Cities, spoke to us at our meeting about their service project and presented us with a trophy. At the picture, you can see her standing at the right as we hold the trophy in the middle. The Cape Coral Breeze also recognized our achievement by writing an article and interviewing a few of our members about the contest.
Okay, so on August 13th, we actually were able to attend the FLC Youth Council Annual Program. And there was about like three parts to this program. So the first part, we got to the place and we were presented with a presentation that called Moving the Needle. And this presentation basically taught us a couple of tips and tricks and methods of effective engagement and how our youth council members can talk to, talk to other members about viewpoints and if we have differing viewpoints, how we can actually come to solutions even though we oppose one another. And then the second part of the annual program was called the World Cafe. What we did was, since there were so many youth councils, we split up into groups. Our whole council was actually in a different group with other youth councils. And what we had, what we were tasked to do was to talk about the problems that we have within our own youth council and talk to the other youth councils and try to create a solution to how we can fix that problem in our youth council. So this was really nice because like obviously we have these different, differing viewpoints, but we were able to come together as people and members and create solutions from some, some youth council that is like miles away. And then the last, oh, and then another part of the World Cafe was we tasked, we voted on two of, two of our own youth council members to be cafe hosts. And what these cafe hosts would do was in the group that we had with the other youth council members, they would basically bring, push forward that conversation. If there was a awkward silence part or we kind of got into that weird transition, our cafe hosts would talk and lead that conversation. At the end of the program, our cafe hosts actually compiled a list of the problems and solutions they heard throughout the day and presented it to the other youth councils. So they could get that feedback that they learned throughout the program. The last part of the annual program was, we actually got the opportunity to have like a Q and A session with three special guests at the FLC and we were able to talk to Madden City Clerk Vanessa Joseph of North Miami, Chris Hogs of Intergovernmental Relations in Largo, and Howlandale's, Howlandale Beach City's Commissioner Sabrina Chavayana. Yeah, so basically what we did was just, we listened to them about how they got into council and how they got into government, their upbringing, and yeah, we were able to get a couple of feedback from them and throughout this part of the program. And the next topic that we have today is the Love Locks Project. We are continuing working on the Love Locks Project and we actually changed location of where this sculpture will be. It's going to be in the Cultural Park. I know that we were supposed to have it in JC Park, but now we motioned to have it in Cultural Park. One of our members, Member Reamer, he is actually in contact with one of the, with a welder, Mr. Corbin of Tip Top Welding, and he is actually donating his time to creating the actual sculpture. And we also were able to decide on, we are also able to get the cost of how much this project will be, and it's actually approximately $10,000. So what we are trying to do to cut down that cost is to fundraise, we're trying to, we're actually trying to host things like events, be, have, be a vendor at an event, but we're also, another effective way that we're trying to cut down this cost is we are talking with other welders and other places that could, not welders, other places that could donate metal, scrap metal to us that will cut down the cost of the actual sculpture. And Member Reamer is actually in contact with someone at FGCU, they are a welder and they are possibly able to donate some scrap metal. So we're getting closer to putting this most, this project into motion.
The next item on our presentation is the Senior Project. So recently our seniors decided on partnering with the Cape Coral Art Center to create a paint-by-number mural at the center. The plan is to involve the community with the creation of the mural by possibly having an event where citizens of our community can paint different sections of the mural. We are also planning on incorporating fundraising into this project by allowing vendors to join the event as well and to make it a citywide fun destination. We are continuing to stay connected with the Cape Coral Art Center to discuss the project further. Next is our Junior Project. The juniors have been brainstorming on different projects, some of which include hosting book drives and beautifying our parks. Member Revelo has proposed creating a kindness rock garden to be the primary project, which is the idea we are running with. This project is based around creating a garden that is filled with hand-painted rocks by our community. The juniors have been working out the details of what the kindness rock garden entails such as the shape, dimensions, and where we will be acquiring the materials to finish this project. We have contacted Superintendent Matthew Creed to discuss the park location, particularly Lake Saratoga Park. All of these are, both these projects are still in the works and we are working at every meeting to finalize each detail of these projects.
The youth council has recently created a TikTok account and we're going to be using this form of social media to reach out to the community and specifically to you, the youth, where the username is on the screen. And we are planning to use the account to post updates and snippets of our meetings, once again to reach out to the youth and just kind of show them what we're doing and So we also are, we were also looking at creating a plan for our future. Our main goal for the future of Cape Coral is to bring our youth together and to create a safe and youthful community. We're planning to create a strategic plan that would help guide our future of the youth councils forwards in the future. I'm sorry. To begin, to begin planning, we're having the workshop in the city council chambers November 15th at 4:00 PM. All youth of Cape Coral, specifically students in the area, are invited to this workshop to allow us to understand reoccurring concerns in the community and more ideas to help better our future. Do you have any questions?
Councilmember Hayden?
I want to thank you four for putting together an excellent report. As you can see, they're, they're working really hard and just, just a couple of things to note with what they said. No other youth council in the state of Florida has a strategic plan. So they are pioneers, so to speak, in developing this plan that not only they will be able to use, but future youth councils will be able to use as kind of a guide or roadmap to how they are going to move forward with thoughts and recommendations of planning the city through, through their eyes, which is really important moving forward for this youth council. As far as I know, no other youth council in the state has ever had this type of a workshop where they're actually inviting student governments and other students to come in and share their thoughts of the future of a city that many of them were born in and may raise families in. So these, these are all things that are very important to them besides all the projects that they're working on. So if anybody wants to come and see this group in action, there's a meeting at 3:00 PM Friday, and they'll all be sitting up here and discussing all these projects and everything that they're working on that they briefed you on this evening. So once again, thank you for staying and this is what, this is what public input feels like.
Thank you.
And, you know, we do encourage people to come and talk, talk to the youth council at these meetings as well. Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Also, I'd like to congratulate you on your Youth Council Community Service Award for all your hard work because that's, that's why you got that particular award is the hard work that you and your colleagues are doing. So thank you, we appreciate the update and continue to do great work. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now I will move on to item nine A, the Consent Agenda. I'll now open up consented agenda for council. To pull any items or entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any council discussions? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item nine B is appointments to boards and committees. B1 is the Budget Review Committee. My understanding, Madam City Clerk, we have an alternate vacancy position. We have two applicants because one withdrew.
Yes, Your Honor, there are two applicants today. They are both in the audience if council wishes to conduct interviews.
Okay, and I would ask council, not only with this appointment, but the park's appointment, the timeframe that we want to allow each candidate, one minute?
One minute.
Okay, so any candidate that, I'll let Madam City Clerk call up the first candidate. You'll have one minute to introduce yourself and why you want to be chosen for this particular position.
Lisa Barnes.
Hi, my name's Lisa Barnes and I've been a resident of Southwest Cape for about 30 years now. My background is that I currently hold a master's degree in public administration and I recently retired from the Cape Coral Police Department after 30 years. In my role at the Cape Coral Police Department as a, excuse me, as a captain, I was responsible for putting together the budget for the respective bureau that I was assigned to. As a deputy chief, I was responsible for kind of overseeing that budget, making sure we were kind of spending what we should, when we should, and how we should. In working with budget, as much as I have, I'm well aware of the fact that budget for the city is more than just a document that has account numbers and dollar figures. It's basically the roadmap for the strategic plan and how we're going to carry out the goals for the city. So I'm well aware of how all that works. In my time there, most of the time I was lucky to do budget when times were really good, but I've done budget when times are really bad.
Thank you.
Good evening again. I'm Mike Stone. I uniquely qualified for this position based on spending 15 years in the banking industry and not only handling a lot to do with companies' budgets, business banking, commercial lending, looking at tax returns and the like. I do hold a bachelor's degree from FGCU, it's in legal studies, so maybe not quite as transferable to the budget. However, in the last five years, I've managed and acted as the CFO of a building company, so not only managing budgets, but also a lot of investment forecasting. So I like to say around the office, I love a good spreadsheet and, and I'd look forward to being able to add some of the, some, something accretive to the, to the council as an alternate member.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, I guess we will do like we normally do in our voting role, we will go down to each council member and they'll give their vote for whichever candidate that they are choosing for this position.
Certainly. Welsh?
Barnes.
Costin?
Barnes.
Gunter?
Barnes.
Hayden?
Barnes.
Long?
Barnes.
Nelson?
Barnes.
Shepherd?
Barnes.
That is eight, Tate, excuse me. That is eight for Barnes.
And do we have a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve Lisa Barnes for the Budget Review alternate position.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to item B2 and thank you, sir, for applying and we definitely have other positions that come up from time to time and please feel free to, to apply again at some point. We'll move on to B2, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Madam City Clerk, my understanding, we have three member vacancies, one alternate vacancy, and we have four candidates.
Yes, Your Honor, before you today, we have the, we have received four applications to fill the vacancies and I wanted to remind council that the first year that we had Parks and Rec, there were staggering members and three of your applicants had initially been given the one-year membership. All right, so I have learned that all four applicants are here today and if you'd like, I can call them up to the podium. I would also like to point out that Mr. Schwartz, I believe, is a member of one of our existing boards, so he would require a two-thirds vote. Yes.
And my understanding, three of the positions are reappointments that they've applied for?
Yes.
And then Mr. Schwartz is on another board that needs the two-third, two-thirds vote that you mentioned.
Yes, sir.
All right, okay, one minute.
All right. Pasha Donaldson?
Pasha Donaldson, I'm a retired school teacher and I've been working with the city for the 16 years that I've lived here, volunteer as Park and Rec, volunteers, the Oasis Charter School, nine years on the Charter School Board, and the past year with the Park and Rec. So I hope to continue with that and get involved and look at all the great things that the city is doing.
Thank you.
Susan Ilchison?
Mayor, council, my name's Susan Ilchison. I lived in the Northwest Cape for 33 years, raised both of my sons here. I am currently on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. My term is over this month. I ask for your consideration of my application to let me serve a second term. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Cus?
John Cus, live on Somerville Loop. I have a degree, a BS degree in Parks and Recreation Administration. I've worked for two other park districts and also the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, obviously all in Illinois. This past year I served as Vice Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and appreciate your consideration for me to serve again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jack Schwartz?
I do currently sit on two other boards, Affordable Housing and Zoning and Planning. I would like to be a part of the Parks and Recreation Board. I've been in Cape Coral since 1974. I have been a recipient of the Parks and Recreation, both as a participant child and as a coach as an adult, so I'd like to just continue to give back. Thanks for the consideration.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, I think what we'll do is the same process. We'll go down the list and give our, I guess we'll do the three member vacancies first and each council member will give their three candidates and then after that we will see where we are as far as the alternate vacancy.
Welsh?
Ilchison, Donaldson, and Cus.
Costin?
Donaldson, Ilchison, and Cus.
Gunter?
Donaldson, Ilchison, and Cus.
Hayden?
Donaldson, Ilchison, and Cus.
Long?
Donaldson, Ilchison, and Cus.
Nelson?
Donaldson, Ilchison, and Cus.
Shepherd? Shepherd.
Ilchizen, Robertson. I couldn't hear, I'm sorry.
Cus.
Cus.
Tate. All right, that's eight for Donaldson, eight for Ilchizen, and eight for Cus.
Motion to approve Donaldson, Ilchizen, and Cus for the Parks and Recreation Board as a reappointment.
Second.
Any discussions? Councilmember Welsh, I see your light on. I don't know if that's...
Yeah, it was just to remind everyone that the way that I set this board up is that you can serve two terms. And then you'll have to either take a different position or serve as an alternate. So we've only had basically five meetings. Two of them are getting it set up, and we've got a great flow right now. So I'm glad everyone chose what they did, and I welcome the alternate. And so he knows they'll be up again where they won't be able to have these seats. So I made it, so there's a nice rotation, and it's coming along really well.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, we have a motion, a second on the floor. If you could call the roll, please.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosdine.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson. Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. I'll now open the floor for a motion for the alternate position.
I'll make that motion to appoint Jack Schwartz as the alternate position for the Parks Board.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosdine.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson. Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to nine C, unfinished business. We don't have anything, any follow-up items listed for council. Counsel, have any follow-up items? Okay, seeing none, item D nine, we moved up in the agenda, so we've already heard that at tonight's meeting. So I will move on to personnel actions, which is nine E. We do not have anything listed. Or nine F, petitions to council. So I'll move on to nine G, follow-up items from city management. G one is our water quality update. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's time for Dr. Robert and Michael Ilchizen to come to the podium and update you on a variety of water quality issues and topics. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Robert Public Works. Lake Ketchouba is rising a little bit. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, we reached the water shortage management band last week. Just yesterday, we passed over the line, so we are hopeful. There's no lake releases whatsoever, either to the agricultural area, the east coast or west coast. And we've had quite a bit of rainfall this past week, and we've hit over ten thousand CFS at S seventy-nine. And so we have a very, very dark water and poor water quality all throughout the estuary right now. And we're hoping that it's gonna flush out pretty quick. On blue-green algae conditions, all the recent toxin analysis results we received were negative. We're still monitoring algae blooms in different locations. Just yesterday, we made the decision for the canals that are downstream of the Palme d'Or pine go, of course, to perform an algae site treatments because the bloom was spreading too much. I believe there will be counsel of the whole item on this topic next week. Next week, we will have, we will be hosting a human health study from Florida Atlantic University. This is a long-term study that you've heard about before, and we're inviting everybody to attend. Member of the public, there will be financial retribution for participating in the study.
Good evening, mayor and council. Mike Ilchizen, Public Works Director. Staff began testing the bubble curtains, the ones that are in place, ready to go. We did find a couple of warranty issues with some of the systems. There were some welds that had short-circuited some of the wiring. So we have some warranty items before the manufacturer and solitude to fix. And with that, we'll be continuing advancing the agreement with FWC. Once we bring that item to council, then we'll be able to kind of drop off this section from the water quality report. So that's the last item we have on the bubble curtains.
Okay, thank you very much for the update. Any questions from council? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to nine G, to the permitting process update. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Matthew Grambo, Special Projects Coordinator in the City Manager's Office, will now give you our latest update on our progress towards hopefully resolving a lot of the customer service issues related to volume and EnterGov. Mr. Grambo.
Good evening, mayor and council. Matthew Grambo, Special Projects Coordinator in the City Manager's Office for today's EnterGov and Permitting Process Update. During today's update, as with the last couple of updates, I'll be providing an update on our sixty-day action plan, staff's progress with pursuing the five goals in that sixty-day action plan, which will be completed by Friday, October twenty-first, as well as an update on staff's progress with testing the 2021 version of EnterGov, which is scheduled to go live two weeks from today on October fifth. Also be providing a staffing update with the new positions that council approved for our Development Services Department associated with EnterGov and permitting. And finally, I'll have a discussion tonight regarding our post-2021-go-live initial actions within the sixty-day action plan period. So for tonight's update on our sixty-day action plan, today marks the midway point of the sixty-day action plan period. We're about thirty days into it, and again, the sixty-day action plan will end on Friday, October twenty-first, which is thirty days from today. Since last week's committee of the whole meeting, staff have been working, again diligently, to test the 2021 dot one dot four version of EnterGov. Staff have also been reviewing some of the data cleanup script testing results to clean up the volume of data that has been transferred from Tracket to EnterGov and that our consultants, other municipalities, and staff believe could be the source of some of our performance issues in the EnterGov system. Staff have also been working on developing new classifications in our Development Services Permitting Division. And this week, the first two of the 2021 testing focus sessions with the Cape Coral Construction Industry Association were held on Monday and today, this afternoon. Additionally, staff have been planning for the initial two push-button permit reconfigurations. Again, these are only the very first two reconfigurations that staff will be addressing immediately after the 2021-go-live in two weeks. And staff have been working with Tyler Technologies on developing a scope of work for additional implementation consultant services to enable staff to have first-party assistance from the developer of EnterGov to ensure that all actions taken after the 2021-go-live will assuredly result in increased performance and overall increases in performance efficiency for our permitting program here at the city. We did run into a little bit of a hiccup with our legacy data cleanup due to some issues with the EnterGov intelligent action automations. Our staff has been working with Tyler Technologies, the developer of EnterGov, to approve some automations and scripts that will automatically clean a portion of that legacy data. In response to the need for Tyler Technologies to address the issues with their intelligent action automations, we've escalated our support ticket for this particular issue. And we're also working on developing additional manual cleanup tasks that can be completed in the short term so that we can clean up as much of that data without needing Tyler approval to accomplish all of it. So we are working on data cleanup. It is ongoing. We have manual data cleanup tasks occurring for both permits and requested inspections that came over from eTracket back in February. But once we have our support ticket addressed, which has been escalated with Tyler, we should be able to automate the removal of a large amount of that bad data, that data from eTracket. So that will help increase the system performance as well. For our EnterGov version 2021 testing, we are in our final push for testing prior to the go-live of EnterGov version 2021 dot one dot four, which is scheduled and assuredly to be October fifth, Wednesday, October fifth. This will require system downtime on Monday, October third, and Tuesday, October fourth, which will be communicated through our partners in the industry, as well as through the city's social media channels, through a communications campaign. The testing of the 2021 version is occurring in a lot of different areas in the system. Firstly, and most importantly, we've been testing all of our permit application workflows. That includes all of our building permits, our permits that we've already reconfigured, as well as permits that we have not reconfigured yet. And so staff in our building division, as well as members of our Public Works, Fire Department, Financial Services Department, are all testing different workflows in the system to ensure that there is a smooth transition to the new version in two weeks. Additionally, we've been testing all of our system user roles in the system. So every type of responsibility in the EnterGov system is being tested to ensure that even people who aren't working at EnterGov every single day are going to be exposed to any potential changes to their role in the EnterGov system in version 2021. And also, doing the role testing allows for an evaluation of the integration of the 2021 version of EnterGov with other Tyler products that the city has, as well as prepare staff and users for any changes that we've noted in the 2021 version. As I mentioned earlier, this week was our kickoff for our CCCIA 2021 dedicated focused testing sessions. We had a extended session on Monday in which we reviewed several complicated single-family residential permit types with industry representatives. They came here to City Hall, logged on to our restricted testing site, put actual, real-world permitted information into the system. And with staff sitting around the table, we were able to go through the entire workflow and note any changes and improvements that the new version has with real-world permitted information. Additionally, during these focused testing sessions, we're receiving feedback from the contractors, not only on the 2021 version, but on improvements, quality-of-life improvements, functionality improvements that the contractor community would like to see, that will make their job easier in working through our CSS system for EnterGov and applying for permits, as well as resubmitting permits that require resubmitting, and addressing a lot of common issues that our contractors face during the permit application process. The final 21, 2021 testing focus session is scheduled for Friday. And overall, it'll be about eight or nine hours of dedicated testing with our contractor community in the 2021 version of EnterGov. For an update on our DSD and permitting staffing, we have three new positions that are fully staffed, three types of new positions that are fully staffed. Staffed all of our customer service representatives that were approved, our customer service supervisors that are approved, and as well as our two new plan review technicians are all hired. And here at City Hall, working in the system, our residential provisional building inspectors, provisional building inspectors, plans examiners, and our ITS, EnterGov application administrator position are still posted, and recruitment is ongoing for those positions. So we've talked a lot about what we're doing right now with testing the 2021 version to ensure that there's a smooth transition in two weeks when we go live with EnterGov version 2021. However, immediately after that go-live, that will enable staff to dedicate additional time to continuously improving the system. And the top of our priority list for our post-2021-go-live tasks are our development and reconfiguration of our push-button permit types. As I've mentioned in previous presentations, the initial two of many push-button permits that will be reconfigured include the emergency electrical repair replace permit and the plumbing re-pipe permit. These are very low-hanging fruit. It should not take a lot of time for staff to reconfigure these. We're able to use a lot of the work that we put into our commercial and residential roofing reconfiguration, our HVAC permit reconfiguration, and most recently, our single-family residential permit reconfiguration to enable future configurations to be done more quickly. We're able to use some of the work that we've already put in over the past few months to expedite the reconfiguration of additional permit types. So we're working smarter and using work that we put in for other permit types to make sure that the configurations of a series of push-button permits are able to be done relatively quickly. And the emergency electrical repair replace and plumbing re-pipe are ones that we'll be able to do very quickly within one or two weeks after our go-live for the 2021 version. But other push-button permits will follow these initial two. And next week at our committee of the whole meeting, Vince Cotera will come here and join me during my presentation to discuss staff's actions on addressing additional push-button permits in the near future after go-live. Additionally, this week, we met with the Tyler Technologies Implementation Team to discuss a request for additional services from their implementation consultants. And this is going to be to ensure that we are able to get all the support that we need to make the smartest and best decision to have the most immediate results in improving our system's performance, as well as the efficiencies of our permitting processes internally here at the city of Cape Coral. The first-party consult, the Tyler Technologies Implementation Consultants have been attending these meetings. They're assigning a project manager to us, as well as an implementation consultant who will be dedicated to the city of Cape Coral. They're reviewing a scope of work currently, and will be providing that information to us in the near future so that we can engage with them for the next phase of their involvement here at the city. And finally, one week after the go-live week for the 2021 version of EnterGov, we'll be kicking off our Service Delivery Excellence Advocacy team. And this team is really going to be the nexus of all continuous improvements in the EnterGov system. It's where we're going to be documenting feedback from our contractors, from staff members of all levels within our organization, and documenting, prioritizing, and planning for configuration changes and other system changes that can enable us to ensure that the progress that we're making continues, and we're continuously improving both the speed and performance, but also our internal policies and procedures in Development Services in the Permitting Division to ensure that we're as efficient as possible with, from application, receiving a permit application to reviewing a permit application, to issuing a permit, all the way through issuing a CO. So this is going to be a really critical aspect to our efforts to improve the EnterGov system, as well as our permitting process at the city in general. And we're very excited to really start working on this with additional time after the testing and the go-live of the 2021 version is completed in two weeks. And with that, I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from council? Just want to thank you for all your hard work and keeping us up to date, and we look forward for each week. It seems like we're getting closer and closer to a resolution. I know we're not there yet, but I know staff's working hard in order to try to find that resolution, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to item ten, which is ordinances and resolutions. Ten A is public hearings. We have ordinance seventy-nine dash twenty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance seventy-nine dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending the city of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the city of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as Unit sixty-six, Block thirty-two thirty, lots fifteen through twenty-three, Cape Coral subdivision. From professional to residential multifamily low zone. Property is located at fourteen twenty-five Gleason Parkway, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Wyatt. Madam City Clerk.
This one is a quasi-judicial hearing.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak will provide testimony must be sworn in.
Do you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Wyatt Daltry, planning team coordinator of the city's planning division. My credentials may be obtained at the city clerk's office. This is a privately initiated rezone by the property owner, Jason Tabar, involving just over an acre of property in Southwest Cape Coral to amend the zoning from professional to residential multifamily low. Property is located at fourteen twenty-five Gleason Parkway. This property is just north of Gleason Parkway and east of the intersection of Gleason and Chiquita Boulevard South, as you can see on the aerial to the right. Surrounding area is fairly well-developed to the north, east, and south with single-family residential development. Some multifamily development is located east of and adjacent to the subject property along the north side of Gleason Parkway. These two maps show the current, on the left, and proposed zoning of the subject area and the surrounding, of the subject property and the surrounding area. As you can see, the subject property here is indicated in light blue. That's professional zoning. Additional professional zoning is located adjacent to this property to the west. And as you go further west on Gleason Parkway, to a commercial node at Chiquita and Gleason. Additional commercial properties are located south of Gleason along Chiquita Parkway. Properties in yellow are single-family residential, brown multifamily residential, or what we call residential multifamily low. The map on the right here, which is the proposed zoning, shows that change from professional to RML. To provide you some background here, it's a single undeveloped property. It's had a fairly lengthy history of land use and zoning changes. It was multifamily for a couple of years back in the mid-two thousands. It was multifamily for a couple of years back in the mid-2000s, from commercial professional to multifamily, and changed back to commercial professional in 2008, and then was changed to its current land use designation of multifamily earlier this year through ordinance 101-21. As I mentioned before, multifamily residential uses are located east of this property and continue eastward to the intersection of Gleason Parkway and Skyline Boulevard. When we analyze multifamily changes, there is a policy, policy 1.7 of the future land use element that indicates, rather, it's a multifamily residential siting guidelines. There are four of these guidelines, and this proposed rezon meets three of those, which we find to be a good candidate for multifamily residential development. We also find the rezon, the proposed rezon, to be consistent with the goal of the housing element, which is to secure a variety of housing types, both in tenure and ownership. So we feel additional multifamily is helpful in that regard. We also analyze this through section 3.46 of the land development code. I'll just go through these real quickly. We analyze whether it's consistent with the comp plan. It is. We analyze whether the four range of uses allowed in this district are compatible with existing uses in the area. They are. Whether the range of uses allowed in the proposed zoning district would be compatible with existing and potential uses in this area. They are. Whether the proposed zoning district would serve a community need or broader public purpose, we find that it does. Whether the characteristics of the proposed rezon are suitable for the uses permitted in the proposed zoning district, it is. And then lastly, whether or not a zoning district other than this one requested would create fewer potential adverse impacts. And the fact is, RML is the lesser, in terms of density and building height, of the two zoning districts that's consistent with the multifamily future land use. So we find this meets all six of these items under consideration within section 3.4.6. So to conclude, multifamily residential future land use is present in the area. It's been multifamily in the past. The request is for a multifamily zoning. This is basically completing the circle from a change from commercial to multifamily residential. There's a well-documented need for multifamily in Cape Coral. We analyzed our commercial standards in our comp plan for this site and found that to be a weak candidate. So that being a weak candidate for commercial, but a good candidate for multifamily further indicates that this is a good request. So with that, staff recommends approval of this rezon to residential multifamily low. This was presented to the hearing examiner on July 12th, who recommended approval of this rezon as well. I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 79-22, please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. For the record, Tom Slaughter, Cape Land. I have been sworn 4704, Vincennes Boulevard, Cape Coral, 33904. What I'd like to do real quick is just three things. One, enter into the record since this is quasi-judicial, the application, the client report, the video drone and PowerPoint that were prepared as part of this, as well as, of course, the staff report, and lastly, the hex report be consolidated into the record. And then, secondly, I'd like to thank staff and the planning commission and hearing examiner because when we started this process a year and a half ago, we were learning how to deal with COVID. This past summer, we dealt with EnterGov. So we've had delays through the process, but your staff from community development, nevertheless, think of it in terms of the continuity of operations, they've kept other trains moving on time and other things in process. So being aware of other challenges out there, I want to thank them for powering through it all, as well as, of course, your citizen planners with the planning commission because there was discussion and debate at both the plan amendment and then during the rezoning of the appropriateness of multifamily. And then lastly, if this project is approved, what it'll allow the client to do, Jason Taber Point Commercial, is to put in a multifamily project. So we've already been in very preliminary discussion with staff on that. And again, staff's been supportive, and it's something that we think will fill a city need in the end, you know, decent, middle-income multifamily. So with that, are there any questions?
Any questions? No, sir, not at this time.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 79-22? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 79-22?
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to ordinance 82-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 82-22, an ordinance amending the city of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the city of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as lots 29, 30, 31, and 32, block 1699, unit 44, Part 1, Cape Coral subdivision, and lots 33 and 44, block 1699, unit 44, Cape Coral subdivision. From professional office to commercial zone. Property is located at 601 Cape Coral Parkway West and 602 Southwest 47th Terrace, providing severability and an effective date.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Struve?
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, for the record, Mike Struve, planning team coordinator with the planning division. My credentials are in file with the city clerk's office. This case before you is another privately initiated rezoning request. The owner is 601 CC Parkway LLC. The owner is requesting to rezon two sites, or portions of one site and another site in its entirety totaling .7 acres, from the professional office or P zoning district to the commercial or C zoning district. Both properties are located in southern Cape Coral. The larger of the two sites has frontage on Cape Coral Parkway. The smaller of the two, located to the north, has frontage on Southwest 47th Terrace. This is an aerial map showing the two subject sites in red. Both properties are vacant. Uses within the subject block contain a mixture of commercial uses and smaller multifamily developments. There's a property owned by the city that's located at the northeast corner of the property that appears to be vacant, but is actually being used for stormwater detention and treatment. If you look more globally, outside the subject block, uses to the north are mainly multifamily. Uses to the south across Cape Coral Parkway are single-family, and then there's a mix of commercial and multifamily uses located on blocks both to the east and west of the subject block. As I mentioned earlier, the rezon area consists of two rather small sites. All sites in the subject block have either professional or commercial zoning. And again, there is a mix of commercial, multifamily, and single-family uses present outside of the subject block, but in fairly close proximity to the two rezoned sites. This is a future land use map showing that the future land use map of the subject block is commercial-professional. Current zoning map showing the split zoning for the six-lot site with frontage on Cape Coral Parkway, two of the lots, I should say, are zoned commercial, the other four professional, and then the smaller subject parcel to the north has professional zoning. And then, this is the proposed zoning map should this rezoning application be approved by the city council. Staff has analyzed this request consistent with section 3.4.6 in the land development code, as well as Article 4, which contains our schedule of uses in the land development code. The subject block has frontage on Cape Coral Parkway. That's a major street at Sixth Lane. At this block, that street is designed to carry relatively heavy volumes of traffic, including commercial traffic. It also provides sites within the subject block a good bit of visibility, which is important for commercial uses. Both the professional and the commercial zoning districts allow a variety of uses, and in fact, they allow an overlapping array of uses. However, the C zoning district does allow more uses than the professional zoning district. It also allows some uses that, in some cases, generate more traffic, and in some cases, may have some adverse attributes associated with them. In some cases, perhaps loading areas, drive-through facilities, things of that sort, which you normally don't associate with uses that are allowed in the professional zoning district. That being said, we do have regulations in our land development code that are intended to mitigate or ameliorate some of those adverse effects, our non-residential design standards, screening requirements for loading areas, and so on. As I mentioned earlier, there are single-family uses to the south of the rezon area. However, they are separated by a Sixth Lane street. The rezon could provide some benefits to the community by providing commercial uses at the neighborhood level that might allow people living close by to actually walk to purchase products and services without having to get into their car. The rezoning of the larger site, those four lots that currently are zoned professional, would provide for uniform zoning throughout the site. That's not required to develop in the city, but it is easier to develop property in the city when you have uniform zoning throughout. Unbalanced, staff finds that this rezoning request will not have an adverse impact on the surrounding area. It's consistent with promoting the public safety and welfare of the community, and staff is recommending approval of this request. The hearing examiner reviewed this case in July and also recommended approval. We had no speakers at that particular public hearing. Prior to that public hearing, however, we did receive three letters of correspondence from people living in the area, all opposed to the rezoning case, and I will stand by in case you have questions.
Thank you. I'll now open up the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the ordinance 82-22? Please come forward.
Afternoon, evening, Mayor and Council. Joe Mazurkis, President of BGM Consulting, here on behalf of the owner, 601 CC Parkway LLC. As staff has presented, this particular site made up of six lots on Cape Coral Parkway and two lots on 47th Terrace presently has all commercial-professional land use and a mixture of commercial zoning and professional zoning. The unification of the zoning to commercial is to unify the zoning on the whole site to market the site as a commercial property, being both parcels together. There's six parcels on Cape Coral Parkway and the parcel adjacent across the alley on 47th Terrace. This would make it far more attractive for some additional flexibility in developing, and we think that the market is, will react to the rezoning far more so than it would a split zoning with commercial and professional. Respectfully request, you approve our rezoning to make the whole site commercial. If you have any questions, oh, we'd like to first also take staff's report and presentation and put it into part of our record for this evening. And if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during a public hearing? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 82-22?
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Move on to resolution 194-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 194-22, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Barcelona Canal right-of-way, located adjacent to lots 34 and 35, block 196, Cape Coral, Unit 3, providing for the vacation of plat for public utility and drainage easements associated with lots 34 and 35, block 196, Cape Coral, Unit 3. Property located at 137 Southwest 58th Street, providing an effective date.
Okay, this is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Struve?
Good evening. And Mayor, Council, for the record, Mike Struve, planning team coordinator with the planning division. My credentials are in file with the city clerk's office. This case before you is a privately initiated vacation request. The owners are Anthony and Lynn Ronchioli. The owners are requesting to vacate 512 square feet of Canal right-of-way associated with the Barcelona Canal, and 408 square feet of platted easements adjacent to the canal on their site. This particular property is located in southern Cape Coral at 137 Southwest 58th Street. This is an aerial showing the subject site in red and surrounding properties. This particular site has a single-family home and a couple of marine improvements. It's surrounded mainly by single-family homes, and this is an area of the city that is largely built out with single-family homes, except for a couple of large properties to the west. Subject site has a single-family future land use classification and single-family zoning or R1 zoning. This property is a two-lot platted site, a little over 10,000 square feet. As I mentioned earlier, it has a single-family home, a dock, and a boat lift. There is unexcavated Canal right-of-way that separates the rear property line of the site from the Barcelona Canal property, and that is the area that the, the right-of-way area that the owners are requesting to vacate, and that totals about 508 square feet. The applicants indicated in their letter of intent that they are seeking this vacation to expand their property, to give the property more depth, with the end goal of being able to construct a new pool behind their existing single-family home. This diagram here shows the area that the applicants, the right-of-way area the applicants are seeking to vacate shaded in red. And the next diagram shows the portion of the platted easements that the applicants are seeking to vacate. And the city would be retaining as a condition of approval a new or perimeter easement sufficient to provide a six-foot-wide easement around the entire site as a condition of approval. In terms of our analysis on this case, the actual right-of-way itself is rather small. It's isolated. It's not intended to provide any future benefit to the city, although it could certainly be beneficial to the property owner if this area is vacated. The enlarged site will provide the owners with more flexibility in constructing a pool on their property. The utility providers have reviewed this request. They do not object to the proposed vacations, although LCEC does request a perimeter easement be maintained around the site, which is one of staff's recommended conditions of approval. The hearing examiner did review this case back in July and also recommends approval with staff conditions. We have received to date one phone call just from an individual wanting more information about this case, and I will stand by in case you have any questions.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on resolution 194-22, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve resolution 194-22?
So moved.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to resolution 201-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 201-22, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Malibu Canal right-of-way and all underlying easements located adjacent to lots 7 and 8, block 30, Cape Coral, Unit 1. block 30, Cape Coral, Unit 1, providing for the vacation of plat for public utility and drainage easements associated with lots 7 and 8, block 30, Cape Coral, Unit 1, property located at 1224 Eldorado Parkway East, providing an effective date.
Thank you. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Also, anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Terraro.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Vince Cataro, Community Development, excuse me, Development Services Director for the city. I have to apologize to the council. I usually try to make an effort to introduce newer staff members, and I did not do that last time, so I would like to introduce one of our newer planners, who's actually been with us for several months, Candace Ford. You've seen her before, but I failed to introduce her to you, which I had intended to do, and we have another new planner that's going to be coming up before you soon, and I'll make sure that I get it right that time. So, would you please welcome Candace? Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Candace.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, Candace Ford, Associate Planner with Planning Services. My credentials are on record with the Clerk's office. Okay. So, the applicant is going to be Turnkey Homes, number 5 LLC, oops, sorry. The location address is going to be 1224 Eldorado Parkway East.
Can you speak a little closer to the mic, please?
Yes. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. The owner is requesting to vacate 1368 square feet of Canal right-of-way adjacent to the Malibu Canal, and along with 408 square feet of platted easements along lots 7 and 8. They will retain 613 square feet for utility easements. And this is the location of the site on the screen here, outlined in red on the right and then general within the Cape Coral on the left. As you can see, the zoning for the site is R1, along with most of the sites within 500 feet and nearby. A little bit about the site. The site is a two-lot platted site. It's got about 10,000 square feet in total. Currently, it is a vacant lot with marine improvements that do include a seawall and a concrete dock at this time. The Malibu Canal is to the south, and it is platted between 80 and 380 feet in width. Of course, the owner is requesting to vacate the Canal right-of-way and platted easements with the hopes of extending their property line down to their current seawall, since they do have the gap in between the two. The vacation request is going to be on the left with the 1368 that they're proposing to vacate, and then the right is going to show the 408 square feet that they're proposing to vacate for easements as well. An analysis regarding the site, it's not, at this time, expected to be a future use for the county or the city. There's no real need for transportation for this. There's no water management access or utility functions at this time. Part of the right-of-way will be retained for easement, drainage easement purposes. Like I said, the 613 square feet will be retained as per LCEC requirements, and then all three utility providers did provide no objection in order for this case. Planning staff does recommend approval, and this did go before Hex, and she also recommended approval as well. Prior to Hex and Council, I did receive quite a few inquiries via phone call and email from residents, but they were just more inquiries. They did not oppose or reject or approve of the case. They were just curious. And that said, I will stand by for any questions you have.
Thank you. I'll now open up the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 201-22? Please come forward. See, a none. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 201-22?
So moved.
Second. Any council discussion?
Mayor, I just had one question.
Sure.
Does they approve with conditions? The conditions are a part of this, or do we have to spell that out?
Yes, they are going to be part of it, and that, one of the conditions is to maintain the 613 square feet.
Any other discussion? See, a none. We have a motion in a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Next item on agenda was ordinance 52-22, but that item, at the request of the city manager, I believe, was withdrawn, and that was approved in our original adoption of our agenda tonight, so that particular item will come back at a later date. Move on to item 10B, introductions, resolution 201, I'm sorry, 202-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Resolution 202-22, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for public utility and drainage easements lying in lots 4 through 7, block 1543, Cape Coral, Unit 17. As more particularly described herein, property located at 329 Del Prado Boulevard North, providing an effective date. The public hearing will be October 12, 2022.
Any discussion by staff or council? See, a none. We'll move on to Resolution 203-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Resolution 203-22, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Lucerne Canal right-of-way, located adjacent to lots 15 and 16, block 5, Cape Coral, Unit 1, Part 2, providing for the vacation of plat for public utility and drainage easements associated with lots 15 and 16, block 5, Cape Coral, Unit 1, Part 2, property located at 5646 Riverside Drive, providing an effective date. The public hearing will be October 12, 2022.
Any discussion by staff or council? See, a none. We'll move on to Resolution 207-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Resolution 207-22, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for easements underlying a previously vacated alley and public utility and drainage easements lying between lots 63 through 68 and 69 through 75, block 3367, Cape Coral, Unit 65. As more particularly described herein, property located at 808 Southwest 42nd Terrace, providing an effective date. The public hearing will be October 12, 2022.
Any discussion by staff or council? See, a none. We'll move on to ordinance 83-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 83-22, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from public facilities to multifamily residential land use for property described as all of block 2088, Unit 31, Cape Coral subdivision, property located at 1429 Northeast 15th Avenue, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be October 12, 2022.
Any discussion by council or staff? See, a none. We'll move on to ordinance 84-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 84-22, an ordinance providing for the release of the perpetual stormwater drainage easement as recorded on June 12, 1997, in the public records of Lee County, Florida. As more particularly described herein, property located off of Diplomat Parkway East, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be October 12, 2022.
Any discussion by staff or council? See, a none. We'll move on to ordinance 88-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 88-22, an ordinance approving the sale of municipal surplus real property described as all of lots 12 through 17, block 6400, all of tract G, and all of lots 1 through 5, block 6401, all of tract F, and all of lots 1 through 7, block 6402, all of tract E, and all of lots 1 through 4, block 6403, all of tract D, and all of lots 1 through 3, block 6404, all of tract C, and all of lots 1 and 2, block 6405, all of tract B, and all of lots 1 through 7, block 6406, and all of tract A, and all of lots 1 through 8, block 6407, all as shown on the plat of Cape Coral, Unit 76, The Islands, recorded in Plat Book 35 at pages 121 through 129 of the public records of Lee County, Florida, containing approximately 47 acres pursuant to Section 2-155 of the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, authorizing and directing the mayor and clerk to execute a deed conveying the aforementioned surplus real property to Gulf Gateway Resort and Marina LLC, property located at 106 Old Burnt Store Road North and 606 Old Burnt Store Road North, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be October 12, 2022.
Any discussion by staff or council? See, a none. We'll move on to ordinance 89-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the first public hearing date.
Ordinance 89-22, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Land Development Code by amending Article 4, zoning districts, Table 4.1.6, Use Table, regarding mobile food vendors and mobile food courts as conditional uses in the P, C, I, I-N-S-T, N-C, C-C, M-X-B, M-X-7, and S-C zoning districts. Amending Article 4, zoning districts, Chapter 2, Specific Regulations by District, Sections 4.2.6, 4.2.7, 4.2.8, 4.2.9, 4.2.11, 4.2.12, 4.2.13, 4.2.14, and 4.2.15 regarding mobile food vendors and mobile food courts, and to make zoning district text regulations consistent with the zoning use table. Amending Article 5, Development Standards, Chapter 11, Conditional Uses, to create Section 5.11.13, Mobile Food Vendors, regarding the establishment of zoning regulations for mobile food vendors, creating Section 5.11.14, Mobile Food Courts, regarding the establishment of zoning regulations for mobile food courts, and amending Article 11, Definitions, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Section 11.2, Definitions Regarding Mobile Food Vendors and Mobile Food Courts, providing severability and an effective date. The first public hearing will be October 12, 2022.
Any discussion by staff or council?
Mayor, I have one question.
Councilmember Tate.
When we brought this up at the committee of the hold, there was some discussion about fines that we had discussion on, and I know we were going to add that in. Well, I thought we had a consensus to add that in. Did we change that in any way, or is it going as written, and then they'll have to do it as a later date? Do you remember the discussion, or was it just...
Was that the daily, the daily fines that we wanted to impose?
Yeah, we talked about it for this ordinance and for another ordinance, and I thought we were going to add it in before it came before us, but I'm not sure. I don't want to slow it down in any way, so, but I just didn't know. Did you get clear direction to do that or not?
I don't really recall. I know the other ordinance is the mooring ordinance. I mean, I believe that that's the other ordinance to which you're referring. I don't remember if this one really had any changes to it or not.
Okay, so there's no fines or anything in here?
I'm sorry?
As it's presented tonight, there are no fines or fees, anything in here that we added. Oh, hi, Amy.
I just, I don't recall, Councilmember.
Amy's up there.
For the record, Amy Yearsley, interim planning manager. The city attorney's office did, makes the changes to include the daily fines.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other council or staff discussion? Okay, let's move on to item 11, reports. Councilmember Welsh, report.
Thank you. One report. As I said last week, I was going to go to the LCEC meeting. I did. The one, one other resident was there, and we both got to speak. I did find out that you have to reserve your spot, as they only hold their meetings in a boardroom, and it's very limited seating, and security checks you in, and you get brought to the room. So if any of you decide to go, make sure you call ahead, or any residents that want to go, make sure you call ahead and reserve a spot. Unfortunately, though, since this meeting came up so quick, there was nothing on the agenda that had anything to do with Cape Coral or the service or the rates, but I did get to speak before the board and express some of our residents' concerns, and with staying and listening to some of the managers or department directors' reports, I did hear some good news, that there is a forecast for natural gas that has it coming down in February. So it was a future forecast that was earlier than they expected, and with speaking with them today, the price came down. I don't want to misquote it, but I know the prices are lowering on natural gas, so it looks good that maybe these rates won't, the cost adjustment won't be as long as we expected, but then again, that's just forecasts. So I am going to keep an eye on the agendas like I do with the county commissioners, and when I see things that, that are regarding Cape Coral, I do like to attend those meetings, so I'll keep an eye out on the LCEC boards as well, but like I said, overall, it was a decent meeting, but unfortunately, there's nothing there for me to bring back in regarding anything to Cape Coral. Thank you.
Councilmember Cosden.
Thank you, Mayor. Since the last meeting, I attended the youth council meeting on September 9, the 9/11 remembrance ceremony, Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting last week, and definitely a fun time. I went to the mom prom, which the special events Parks and Rec put on. It was super fun. They always do a great job, and that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden.
Thanks, Mayor. Couple things, and the youth council members mentioned it in their report, but I'd like this council's permission for the youth council to move forward with the Love Locks Project, the cultural report, and for the spring gala on March 11, 2023.
I don't have any problems. Is everybody okay with having a consensus? Everybody have a consensus?
Yeah, I think we're good with it, but I know originally it was J.C. Park, and then they moved it, so I don't know if it might be good for the youth council to see if maybe one representative can come before the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and let them know that they're looking to do something with the parks, and maybe give them a little update as well on that project.
Don't we have a youth council member on that board?
We do not, so I would like to encourage, maybe if we can find one, that they apply for that position.
Okay. Weren't we supposed to have one on that?
We're supposed to have one.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then there was timing constraints and new members coming in and not filling our member positions, so if they could maybe fill that seat, that would be great.
Yeah, thanks.
Madam City Clerk, I saw your light on. Do we need a motion for anything?
Well, I'm...
As far as Councilmember Hayden's request, or just a consensus from council?
I didn't know if, and I defer to the city attorney, there was a dollar value that may need to be spent in the future. I saw a $10,000 figure in that they were getting fundraising. I didn't know, since there's money involved, if a motion needed to be made.
It's in the planning stage, isn't it?
Right. The, we've got estimated costs right now. We don't have anything official, and they are going to be attempting some fundraising efforts, which is part of getting the permission tonight to allow them to move forward with these two things.
Well, consensus.
This permission for them to do the fundraising for the $10,000?
Well, I don't know that it's going to be $10,000.
The estimated $10,000 for, it was the locks of love, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that should be a motion and a formal vote.
Both are just for, for both the gala and for Love Locks?
I think, I think a motion would be appropriate. I know they're about to engage in fundraising efforts. I've seen that email.
Okay. So I will make the motion to allow the youth council to move forward with the Love Locks Project and the spring gala, and any fundraising efforts that might be involved with each of those projects.
Second.
Any other discussion? Madam City Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Any other report? Okay. Councilmember Long, report.
No report.
Councilmember Nelson.
I also attended the 9/11 memorial service, and I also was asked to attend the MPO as the alternate. Thank you to the city and all of our first responders who did such a beautiful job for the 9/11.
I also attended the nine-eleven memorial service, and I also was asked to attend the MPO as the alternate. Thank you to the city and all of our first responders who did such a beautiful job for the nine-eleven, and that it was, it was great as usual. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Yes, a shout out to our nonprofit friends of Cape Coral Environmental that has been doing our median work. They reported to me that they got some more donations. They got a ten thousand dollar grant from L C E C. That money's going to be used for a project on Aqua Linda, and Kowanis just wrote a check for twenty thousand dollars that's going to work on two other projects and completing them as well. So I just want to say thank you to them, two organizations, for donating to beautify our city. Another subject that I want to talk about is our men and women that work in the utilities department, and the ones I want to talk about are the ones that, that drive the trucks around that you see around the city, that fix the water, water breaks and sewer breaks. I was approached back in July with people telling me that the conditions that these individuals have to work under were pretty horrendous, and the stories I heard, I didn't believe them right away. I did some research and I talked to the city manager and staff, and what, what was going on at that time is, we have seventy of these individuals that drive around these trucks that, that do the repairs, and at shift change, they no longer had a building or a break room, or even a place to get a shower in case they got covered with feces or whatever when they're doing their work. And what was going on was, when they show up at shift change at the yard, they would all stand under the overhang of the building. What I mean by that is where the roof overhangs the exterior wall of the building, a lot of the guys would just line up and stand under that, and that was to stay out of the weather, and they, they, they couldn't go anywhere until the process of shift change was completed. You know, you figure these guys are working in hundred-degree weather, you know, they're, they're first responders. The conditions they work in are horrible. To get back at shift change and have to stand under an overhang because there's nowhere to go, and no matter what the weather is, it could be pouring, it could be lightning, and to the point of even a, a message on the door that they weren't allowed to enter the office. That was one of the conditions. The other condition that was upsetting is these big trucks they drive around, and there's approximately anywhere from four to six guys that drive around in these trucks. No air conditioning. So picture yourself, you know, having to run out on an emergency call, dig a hole in the middle of the street, which is their job, jump in this hole eight to ten foot deep, do the repair. To me, that, that's, that's a pretty tough job. It's a dangerous job. I mean, I can picture my stuff being in one of these holes worrying about maybe a car running through the cones that are put up and falling in the hole and killing me, but other than that, it's just, it's a dangerous job. You know, we're a city that I think does a good job taking care of the, the individuals that work for our city. Whenever we see safety issues with police and fire, we jump on it, we buy them the equipment they need, and this council backs it financially to make sure that they get these things. I've been told that they now have an area that they can go in, and I want to thank the city manager and staff for that, that when they're on shift change, they have a building they can go in to get out of the weather and be in air condition, and they have an inside shower now. They don't, no longer have to shower outside, which was what they used to have to do. But what I'm concerned about is the conditions when they're working their shift. They do this all day long, and sometimes all night long, and, you know, in my lifetime, I've, I've worked jobs where I had to work in heat and outside, and I've actually had heat strokes. I had them twice, and sometimes you just need to take a break and get a glass of water and, and sit down for a minute when you're working in conditions like this. Put yourself in their shoes, they're taking a break to get some water and just relax for a little bit, working in them conditions. They're sitting in a truck that's over a hundred degrees. I was told that we were going to have air conditioners put on these trucks so that these guys aren't having to deal with these conditions, and, and I just found out recently, and I found out by accident. I stopped at one of our local morning places to get a breakfast sandwich, and I saw these trucks there, and I didn't see air conditioners on them, and what staff described to me is they'd be the commercial air conditioners like on campers that are on the roof. So I just walked up and asked the guys, you know, hey, are the conditions better with, with certain, the things I've already discussed, and, and they said, yes, some, and I said, what about the air conditioners for the trucks? And they basically said, nobody cares about us. These individuals have, I think, probably one of the toughest jobs in the city, that at any time on call, they're put in dangerous situations, they're working in extreme heat, and then when their job is done and the, the rest of their shift, they're driving around in a heat box. If anyone's ever stood in a metal lawn shed or a metal container, it just, it's like being in an oven. It's just cooking you. I, I don't think that any of our workers should be in conditions like that. I'm appalled, to be honest with you. I would like to know why we're not doing anything about it, and if we are doing something about it, I would like to hear that we are doing something about it, but I wanted to inform the rest of the council that I brought this up in July. It's now September. We went through the two hottest months of the year, and we all know it's very hard getting good help in any positions in the city. We've had the city manager tell us that we advertise for positions, and I know as a business owner that when I look for people, it's not an easy task, and to have people that work hard, that are doing a great job, and not being there for them and giving them conditions that are civilized, I just had to let everybody know tonight. I, I really think we need to do something. I don't think we're looking at, from what staff has told me, we're not talking, talking about big dollars to make life a little better for these individuals. You know, to get done a job like that and then to drive around in a truck that's just baking, I'm, I'm sorry, and then I had to vent about that tonight, and I would just like to hear what other council members have to say about that, and also hear from our city manager what we're going to do about this, because to me, this is appalling. This is not, this is not good, and, you know, to have employees even say, and it was said more than once, it was said a couple months back, that they don't care about us in this department, like we're not important. That, that's the message I get from these people, and I, I don't like hearing that message as well. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, we'll give you the opportunity to respond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, let me just express my appreciation to Councilmember Shepherd for bringing this issue to my attention several months ago, and as a reminder, this is an operational issue rather than a legislative issue, but nevertheless, I'm happy to answer any que, happy to respond to Councilmember Shepherd's concerns. So when he first brought this to my attention, there were two components, as he mentioned, there's the issue with end of shift and where they can change clothes and so forth. That's, that's been resolved. As you know, you know, we're, we're really behind the eight ball when it comes to investing in our facilities, and at that particular location, you know, the Everest facility, we don't exactly have the most modern facilities, and certainly, we don't have the necessary room to accommodate everybody that's there, but, but working with the resources that we have, we have found a solution, and those employees have access to the utility plant there where they can go take a shower, change clothes, so on and so forth. So that's, that issue has been resolved. With regard to the, the air conditioning on certain vehicles, I just want to point out that I, I, I think perhaps some of the complaints that you have received are somewhat We're not talking about all of, all of our vehicles. There are certain vehicles where the air conditioning units have, in fact, are no longer working, but these are older vehicles that are probably close to being surplused out, and it isn't cost feasible to go in and put in a twelve thousand dollar air conditioning system, that much it costs on some of these older vehicles. And so what we have done is, we've gone in and we've installed a series of fans to provide ventilation. Now, I get it, they're not air conditioning systems providing AC at sixty-eight degrees, but we are in fact providing ventilation to ensure that they remain, remain cool.
Yes, I heard with the research that the units are about eight thousand dollars installed. There are also units that run when the, the vehicle's not in motion, so figure, we've all saw in situations even on the news where, where a crew of, a crew of people doing these repairs could be stuck at a job site for, for a long period of time, okay? The air conditioner that comes with the vehicle is not designed to air condition that entire box truck. It's designed to air condition the area where the driver sits, where they usually build a wall. The air conditioner's not designed for the whole box. So, you know, to say it's not a worthwhile investment, then we're saying that these employees aren't a worthwhile investment. These are bad conditions. I've sat in budget meetings where we're talking about departments that want new carpet, or new, or new desk, or a new chair, and I, and I'm fine with that, and there's many, many other departments that are asking for money. But this is a situation where people are working in hundred-degree weather with hundred, with hundred percent humidity, digging ditches, going in holes, having su, dealing with high pressure lines, having sewage dumped on them, and then when they get a break, they have to sit in, in a truck, and our answer is going to be, well, that truck's a few years old, we don't want to really invest eight grand in to put an air conditioner in it, we'd rather you have a heat stroke. I, I'm sorry, I'm not letting up on this one.
So.
To me, that, this is ugly. This is ugly. We, you know, we, we have people quitting different departments for other reasons. We have these great people that bust their butt doing what they do, and as all I'm saying is, I think the air conditioning is a tool that's needed. We don't, we don't tell the police department or the fire department, when they need a, a tool or a piece of equipment to keep them safe from the job they do, we make sure they have the tools and machinery that they need to do their job and be safe. This is another form of first responders, that if in the middle of the night, a sewer line breaks, a water line breaks, they're there. If it's at rush hour and they're digging a hole on Cape Coral Parkway, they're digging a hole at rush hour, they're standing in that hole with the cars zooming by to make sure that the citizens of this city have water and sewage. And to say that we don't have the money to, to put air conditioners in them vehicles that run when the vehicle's not running, they are the air conditioning units that are put on campers and RVs, where they can have somewhere, take a break for a minute so they don't have a heat stroke, and they're eight thousand dollars, they're not twelve thousand dollars. I, I'm sorry, and if, even if they were twelve thousand dollars, to, to me, you know, are we going to be sitting in a meeting where people are quitting because of work conditions in that department? To me, this is a no-brainer. This is a no-brainer. You know, I, I know we don't have the right, we need a lot of buildings being, different buildings being replaced at the Everest plant, we need a lot of facility buildings, I get it, but that's not endangering someone's health. This is, this is something that's a health issue, and I'm just asking for support of council to look into this, because I really believe that we have to do something for these individuals. It's not proper working conditions.
Bye, May.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Mayor, this issue has been brought to my attention. I have looked into it. We have taken appropriate action. There are employees out there, members of city council, who may not like the action that we've taken. However, we feel the actions are appropriate. The type of vehicle that the council member is referring to are not designed to provide rehab sanctuaries for people working in the field. These are, we call them bread trucks, and the back of those vehicles are designed to carry tools, not to serve as rehab. In the majority of those vehicles that we operate, the cabs are air-conditioned. They're designed only to provide air conditioning to the cab, not to the back of the vehicle itself. What happens is, and I've been told, and as I've looked into this, there, some of our employees like to keep that door, the divider between the cab and the back open. Well, again, the vehicle is not designed for that. So we've addressed, for those vehicles that have air conditioning, we've ensured that those air conditioning systems work, and for those that we feel it's not cost vehicle feasible to invest that kind of money into a vehicle that is about to be replaced, we made sure that we installed multiple fans in the cab. But when it comes to air conditioning, the, or the back of those trucks, that's not what those types of vehicles are, are designed for. And, you know, we typically have multiple crews on a project, we have different types of vehicles that, that are at a site. If an individual needs to have a rehab location, there's a different type of vehicle. I don't particularly like the fact that they're having to rehab in vehicles, and maybe they should, maybe we need to look at a, a different approach to that, but I don't think that a panel truck is the appropriate truck, vehicle, or location for them to be doing rehab in, regardless of whether it's air-conditioned or not.
Mr. City Manager, I think you need to go look at how the crews operate, because I did. It's five, five men per truck. The trucks that you're talking about, you're exactly right, they're designed for two people to sit up front. Three people are sitting in the back with the tools. That's how they operate every day.
That's a fact that I was not aware of.
So they are not, I don't even know if they're in proper seating with a seatbelt.
Well, that was my other question, because how are they being transported in that truck?
So, so please look into this, because, you know, I'm, I'm going to be frank, I didn't believe the stories. You know, all of us on council, we get citizens that call us with stories, we, we hear stories all the time, and I took it with a grain of salt when I first heard it, and I said, let me look into it. When I did the research, or with your staff, it was all confirmed that it was for real. And then I went there and witnessed it for myself, and I witnessed it by driving around the city and approaching these vehicles. There's five to six men in each vehicle. There are two front seats. You're right, they're designed for air conditioning in the front, and they're supposed to have a wall. There is no dividing wall. You have the rest of your men sitting in the back with the tools, and when they take a break at a job site, because maybe they're feeling like they're going to have a heat stroke, they're going and sitting with the tools inside a box truck that is cooking. It's not insulated, it doesn't have an air conditioner, the air conditioner for the driver is only working when the truck is running. That air conditioner is not designed to cool that entire box. That's all I'm saying. I'm not out to, to start a war over this. I just wanted to point out that these are poor working conditions. These people bust their butt for what they do. I wouldn't want to lose them and try to find somebody else to take their place, and, you know, I just put myself in that situation. I wouldn't even stand in the hole on a highway. I'd be paranoid about if somebody texting and driving through the cones and driving their car into the hole I'm in, but they do that, you know, and they put their self out there, and as all I'm saying is, as a councilman that is responsible for looking out for the people of this city and all, and the employees of this city, I see this as not a good situation, and I think we should be on it.
Well, I agree with you, Councilmember. If in fact it is true that we are transporting multiple employees in a vehicle that's only designed for two people, that's the first I've heard of that, and I put a stop to that, because that's wrong and it's unsafe. Again, first time I've, I've heard of that, I have not seen it. I have seen our employees in those vehicles, I have not seen the five people in the back of those panel trucks, but I will assure you that I will look into that ASAP.
Thank you.
And if you would, for me, Mr. City Manager, if you could just maybe at our next meeting, give us an update on that, and also, how many vehicles do we have that maybe do not have air condition? That would be some important information that I would need as a follow-up to this discussion.
Happy to do that, and just also, we, we work very closely with our risk management staff to continuously provide ongoing training to our employees, and one of those topics, and I know this for a fact, because I know our employees get annoyed when our risk management folks come by with the mandatory training. But we, in fact, go out there and we continuously drive home the point that, you know, our employees need to be taking certain precautions when they're out working in the field, depending on what the conditions are. But I will tell you, heat injuries are definitely one of the topics.
Councilmember Cosden.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. City Manager, you said that it doesn't sound right that there would be five people in one of these trucks. It should be two. And then those two people would have access to the air conditioning in the front, correct? Okay, so if that's the case, I actually don't feel like you need to bring anything back to us if you put a stop to the five men per truck practice. I don't understand why this was brought up tonight. We're legislative, like the city manager said. Are we talking about an ordinance or a new policy? Because if we're not, it doesn't have a place in this meeting. The city manager has meetings with all of us every week, and we can bring up things. I bring up stuff to the city manager all the time in our meetings. This is not the appropriate time to be talking about this. And I have to wonder, I understand, councilmember, that you brought it up in July, but did you go back again to the city manager with this new information, or just save it here so you could shame him?
I was not out to shame him, but what I just proved a point is he's out of touch. I'm sorry, he just admitted he didn't know. You know, I've told you on more than one occasion of the work conditions, your staff member, Mike Ilchism, came back to me in August and said, we found a cure. He goes, I've investigated what it costs to put air conditions in the vehicle. They're $8,000 apiece. He goes, we found, we juggled things around and we found a way to make a place for these men to be able to go in a building where they, you know, when their shift is done.
I'm sorry.
I still have the floor.
I'm sorry.
Right? Do I still have the floor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And also, another point I want to make is that if this happened in August or July or whenever, as recently as that, this is a city, this is a government. We don't, we can't work in light speed and install air conditioners in trucks within four weeks. It's just not feasible. So to say that it's not happening because you were jerked around or lied to, or, it could still be in the works, we don't know. And if you had talked to the city manager beforehand, you would know where we were on it. But now, all we have is, it sounds terrible, but we don't have the facts. All we have is what you're saying. I would have liked to get staff information on this, so I don't know why we're talking about this. I just don't even know why it's on this. Thank you.
Can I say something now?
Hold on, we're going to go through the lights here first. Are you done, Councilmember Cosden? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I think that the questions have been asked by you, Mayor, regarding some information. I mean, you know, city manager runs a very large operation here, and to say a blanket statement like he's out of touch, I don't think is appropriate. You know, those of us that are up here, if this was a true concern and something we all needed to approve in the budget, or something that needed to be brought up here for a vote, I can understand that, but I don't think that that's fair because of what the mayor just stated, and so did councilmember Cosden, in terms of us not having all of the facts. So I disagree with that. You know, while I respect that our city manager does take rides and looks at things and has, you know, definitely traveled with me through my district, I think with all of us up here at one point or another, while I appreciate that, I also know that this is a very large operation to run. And so, you know, to have him, to state that he's out of touch, I don't think is a fair statement without anything to prove that. This is the first I've heard that this was an issue. You know, I think if these employees were that unhappy, I would hope they would have gone to their supervisor, Michael Ilchism, or Mr. Pearson back there. I'm sure the supervisors would have heard about this. So I agree, and yes, a great question that the mayor asked, I would also ask about how many trucks are we talking here? When are they going to be, you know, replaced? Is it going to be in two weeks? Is it going to be in a month? Is it going to be in six? That, I think, would be helpful information to have. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, also for me is, you know, I need the facts and the data first before I can even comment. And so that's why I asked for the information. The city manager can either bring it back to us in our one-on-one meetings, so we have that information, so we make sure that if there is a problem, we identify. How large is the problem? Are we talking two trucks, 20 trucks, 100 trucks? Also, I'm sure he has to get with his department directors to find out exactly what the normal course of action is on a daily basis, on how many employees are in a truck. So that's kind of the information that I need as a feedback. So that's what I'm looking for. I think, really, for any further discussion on this topic, I think we all, all eight of us need to have that information brought back, and I'm sure I have confidence Mr. City Manager will bring us that information.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to provide you that information. The only thing that I ask is, had I known that this was going to be coming up in today's meeting, I would have had all my notes prepared for it today. The way I look at your regular meetings such as today, these are your regular business meetings. These are your legislative meetings. When it comes down to routine operational matters, I agree with comments that were made earlier. Those are best discussed when we have our one-on-ones, and if that's not the appropriate venue, then we bring it up at a Cal. But at these types of regular meetings where you have public hearings and it's a serious, it's a serious matter, I just want us to stick to the agenda to the extent possible, and then I'm happy to address your operational concerns, again, one-on-one or during Cal meetings.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd?
And I would like to say that I agree with everything that was said, and I normally conduct my way in that fashion, and I've checked multiple times since July, and I was told that it was handled. So I actually found out this morning that it wasn't handled. So I wanted to bring light on something that is very serious, and I'm sorry, but for two months to go by, the two hottest months of the year, and nothing was done, except little fans put on a dashboard to blow hot air around, you know? I'm concerned. And if I have to put myself out there and look bad for not doing this in private, I'm sorry. This hit me, this hit me a little tough. I wasn't aware that nothing was done when I had my meeting this week with the city manager. Like I said, I found out this morning, and it bothered me, bothered me a lot. And because, like I said, I was informed by staff that it was handled, so, and it wasn't. So if anything today, I brought attention to it, and I'm confident that we will now get it handled. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, and I don't mean to prolong this and sound argumentative in any way, but again, when an employee comes up to a member of city council and says, well, they haven't done anything, they don't care about us, it, nothing has happened. Well, again, you know, that particular employee or that group of employees, employees may not like the fact that we installed fans, and they don't want fans, and they want air conditioners. Well, I would argue that a fan is an acceptable corrective action for that particular, for that particular issue. So, you know, obviously, we have to follow certain, I don't want to say OSHA, because we're not an OSHA state, but we do follow those requirements very closely. We want to make sure that our employees are in a, working in safe conditions. And again, we'll continue this conversation at a later date, and happy to provide everything that you guys want. And ultimately, we want to make sure our employees are safe and content.
Thank you. Any other items on your report there, Councilmember Shepherd?
No, I'm complete. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Tate.
That's good news. Okay, so I attended the State Road 78 meeting that the state held, and I was happy to see some residents there and really providing some input. They had interactive maps, and then they also have an online, so I hope people will go and provide their comments. It was good to see that the state recognizes that we need bike paths, and we need a little bit more walkable-friendly on Pine Island Road as all the development comes in. It's frightful to see that they didn't recognize it until all the residents came up, but at least they're addressing it. I attended the charter school meeting as part of my boards, and I'm happy to say that we are full with teachers. All of our positions are full. Our schools are full. They're very happy, very successful. The STEM program is receiving so many accolades. I want to thank Mark Mason. I know he's not here, but he's done a really fabulous job with the budget. We are getting new playground equipment. We got a matching grant for that from Representative G. Lombardo, who brought that through, and the schools are really in good condition. So I'm proud of those schools, and I'm thankful that this council supports them. And, Mr. City Manager, I have full faith and confidence in the job that you're doing.
Yeah, real quickly, before I get into my report, State Road 78, we had a discussion today at our Transportation Advisory Committee meeting. Mr. City Manager, they're putting out, I know there's a web page that we talked about today, that our residents could interact and go in, so we talked about today maybe having our communications department.
I believe that's already done.
Yep.
Yeah, that went out today, yeah.
Okay, great. You guys move quick then. Thank you. All right, I'll get into my report. On September 9th, I was a guest speaker at the Council for Progress, talking about our budget process and where we were landing in our budget. Also, on that day, I attended a ribbon-cutting along with other council members at GeoFrida Park. I attended the swearing-in ceremony of, I believe, six new police officers here in the city at Cape Coral Police Department. Also, on September 10th, I attended the Colusa Sportsman Foundation Awards Dinner. It was another great event. I believe Councilmember Nelson was there. Also, I was a guest speaker at the 9/11 remembered ceremony where several of council attended. Again, another great, great event in the, just to remember the fallen heroes and the individuals that lost their lives on 9/11. I attended Budget Review Committee for Councilmember Hayden on 9/12. Also, I attended, actually, we hosted the Southwest Florida League of Cities meeting here in Cape Coral for this month. Also, on 9/15, attended a Chamber of Commerce after-hours event at Achieva Bank on September 16th. I traveled up to Orlando and attended the Florida League of Cities Legislative Policy Committee meeting on the Land Use and Economic Development Policy Committee. We just started our discussions. Ironically, one of the discussions that we were having, we had outlined five different topics of possible priorities that the Florida League of Cities would consider, and one of those topic of discussions was annexation and enclaves. So we will have additional discussion on that. I did participate in the conversation to outline some of the issues that we are having here in our city, and I will give you an update. We have another meeting October 3rd or 4th, I believe it is. Also, September 19th, I was a guest speaker at the Club Scouts meeting here in Cape Coral at Skyline Elementary. I also attended the ribbon-cutting at the Long Horse, Longhorn Steakhouse. A new business opened up here in the Cape that had their grand opening on the 20th. And two other things I wanted to bring up as well. I know we are having a special meeting next week on staff evaluations. We also have two individuals that report directly to council, the city attorney and the city auditor. Evaluations are coming up as well, so I would like to add those two topic of discussions on for the special meeting next week that we already have scheduled. Just wanted to get a consensus from council to do that, and ask our city clerk to please add those two topics.
Are we going to get forms for those then?
Yeah. Also, I wanted to mention that in our budget hearing tomorrow, I will be attending a Florida League of Cities Board Meeting and Budget Workshop up in, I believe, Clearwater, I believe, or St. Pete. I'm not, can't remember exactly. But I will be traveling up there tomorrow. But our budget hearing tomorrow, I will be participating remotely, since I'll be traveling up to that part of the state tomorrow. Councilmember Tate will be handling the meeting, and I'm sure there will be no problems, but I will be participating remotely.
Do you want approval now for your remote participation?
No, we can wait till tomorrow, and if you don't approve it, I understand. And I believe that's all I have for my report. Madam City Attorney, report?
I have no report.
Mr. City Manager?
The only comment I'd like to make, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, is based on what you just mentioned to your colleagues about the special meeting, I'm going to actually request at that meeting that you all consider delaying my evaluation even later, and perhaps to sometime in November. I want to just make sure that everything is done in a fair and impartial manner, and I think that given that several of you are involved in an election campaign right now, I just want to make sure that I don't get involved or create any undue noise in that process. So I think it's better that perhaps we just delay until all that settles down.
Okay.
So I'll officially request that at your special meeting. Thank you.
Yep, that's fine. Any comments on that or any issues?
Thanks, Chris.
Okay. All right. Time and place of future meetings, we have a special meeting at the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for Thursday, September 22nd, 2022, beginning at 5:05 PM here in council chambers. This will be our second and final budget hearing. Also, we have a committee of the whole meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September 28th, 2022, beginning at 9:00 AM here in council chambers, and we have a special meeting at the Cape Coral City Council is scheduled for Wednesday, September 28th, 2022, beginning at 1:00 PM in Conference Room 220A. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.